January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a regular session of the Bloomington Common Council. Will the clerk please call? This one's on.
Oh, okay.
Will the clerk? Thank you, though. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin.
And did she call Sims?
Did I call Sims? Thought I did, my apologies. Sims?
Here.
Sorry.
There we go. So, thank you very much. Looking ahead to the agenda, we'll begin with the approval of minutes. We have three sets tonight to review and approve. We'll then move into reports, reports by council members, by the mayor and city offices, and by council committees. We'll then move into our first period of public comment, followed by appointments to boards and commissions. We'll then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Under that heading, we have ordinance twenty-three oh one to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a zero-point-five-seven acre property from mixed-use neighborhood scale to mixed-use medium scale regarding three-hundred, three-oh-two, and three-fourteen West First Street, Saint Real Estate LLC petitioner. We'll then take up resolution twenty-three dash oh three to approve an inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation regarding economic development, local income tax distribution to support transit projects. We'll then move to appropriation ordinance twenty-two dash oh six, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the city of Bloomington, Indiana general revenue annual appropriation bonds of twenty-twenty-two, together with all investment earnings thereon, for the purposes of providing funding to be applied to the costs of certain capital improvements for public safety facilities, and paying miscellaneous costs in connection with the foregoing and the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof, and approving an agreement of the Bloomington Redevelopment Commission to purchase certain property. We'll then move into legislation for first readings. Under that heading, we have ordinance twenty-three dash oh two to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding a transfer from Chapter two-point-two-one, Department of Law, to Chapter two-point-two-three, Community and Family Resources Department. We'll then have our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we'll move to adjourn. So, with that, let's move to our approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move approval of the following minutes: the March second, two thousand and twenty-two regular session, the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two regular session, and the October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two special session.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. I know that there were some corrections released earlier today. Thank you for that. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Epstein.
Thank you, that passes eight-zero-one. Let's now move into reports for council members. I'll start on my far left. Councilmember Volin.
Yes, thank you, I have a report. I'd like to comment on the, sorry, I'm trying to find my notes here. I've been concerned about the progress in the county at the Community Justice Response Committee, the CJRC, and what I saw this week watching the meeting of January twenty-third was really disappointing. We just, as many people know, turned down the commissioner's proposal for relocating the jail to a side on Folletton Pike. We didn't rezone that, we thought it was inappropriate, but it seems like the commissioners are also not really even listening to the committee that they convened. This week, they, it was pointed out to them by April Wilson that they claimed that the principles of the CJRC are, that recognizing our commitment to public safety, we will work collaboratively and transparently to accomplish goals, but she said that most, that both collaboration and transparency have been missing. They amended their membership unanimously. The three commissioners amended the membership of the CJRC to remove two judges and to add a commissioner. That commissioner was then named the chair of the meeting that we, this week. That change in the membership of the CJRC was not on their agenda, not in their work session packet, not read aloud during the meeting, so that was a good example of lack of transparency. The meeting itself was canceled on Thursday, but then revived on Monday. It made it difficult for the sheriff to make a presentation because they had rehearsed and expected to meet Monday, then it was canceled, then re, then uncanceled, and the sheriffs themselves said, said that. There were many issues that she said required their attention that were not included in their agenda. The agenda was amended very late that day. I think if, if we were to conduct our meetings in this way without, for example, minimum forty-eight hours' notice or a vote on changes to an agenda, I think we would be rightly chastised. But then the very question of what kind of body is the CJRC? It's called a committee, but, I mean, a committee, which we've discussed many times in chambers, is a subset of a whole body. This is really more of a board or commission, but Commissioner Thomas said that to create bylaws for this, to make it a board or commission, would be a waste of time. So it seems like it's a very arbitrary exercise that the commissioners are conducting, and more than one person talked about how it's creating silos of information, and overall, I think that it's a very poor process to, to develop a new jail under, and frankly, with a jail that's been under a consent decree, a court order, for fourteen years, it seems very difficult to accept that the commissioners are seriously pursuing the most practical jail, and I think that's because their biggest issue is they're unwilling, there's been no mention at all of them perhaps doing so in the center of the city, perhaps because they think it's too expensive. It doesn't mean that the jail needs to be rehabbed. I agree that, I mean, after seeing the presentation by the sheriffs today, that the jail's beyond saving, but if there had been more goodwill between the commissioners and the administration, for example, if there had been a willingness to collaborate more often, perhaps, I mean, I would like to see the city offer two or three acres of land in Hopewell for a jail. Maybe there's a couple of acres that the county owns for a convention center that could be repurposed. Do they really need five whole acres to accomplish their goal, to accomplish a goal that we all have of improving the jail? But, I mean, that kind of committee is not in order between city and county right now, or not really available. So I'm very disappointed to see these developments. I'm very eager for the commissioners to recognize that just in the room they've already gathered are a dozen or more people with a direct interest in the justice system, who they seem to only be technically paying attention to, but they're not really taking their suggestions seriously, and I would urge them to start taking the suggestions seriously of all the other county officials that are trying to help them solve the problem of our justice system. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report this evening, however, I would like to go on record to say that I totally agree with Councilmember Volin's statement that he just gave. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Yeah, just briefly, I have a modest proposal, I think, for council, for future board and commission appointments. I think it might be advisable for us in the future for council committees, those that need to decide on, to interview and to decide on appointments to boards and commissions, that these nominees selected by them be sent by memo or placed in our packet addendum for our review before the meetings. I spoke to Clerk Bolden about this. It could be, perhaps this could be advanced by a team member or in coordination with Stephen Lucas, or perhaps Clerk's office, yet to be determined. In any case, I think it's advisable for us to notify all of us before a meeting begins. Advanced notice would be helpful, I think, for everyone in our consideration, so, an idea, and I hope to follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm sure many of you have heard the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. We've had two mass shootings in California, which has some of the strictest gun laws in the United States within the last week, and, you know, offering thoughts and prayers isn't going to do it. I mean, whatever we're doing now is not working, and it is, we are unique in the world in the number of guns and the lack of restrictions on, on gun, on the acquisition of firearms. We must have common sense, gun control in this country. I urge people at the State House and in our federal government to stop with the bullshit about thoughts and prayers. Let's actually control who can have these weapons, what kind of weapons they can have. And while we're at it, let's actually fund mental health care. As for local things, I agree with a lot of the comments that Councilmember Volin made regarding the Community Justice, Community Justice Response Committee. I've been attending their meetings. I've talked to two out of the three commissioners directly to request that a member of the city government be allowed to participate on the committee. Increasingly, it seems like even participants on the committee are not being heard, and we have not been, the public, neither the public nor the committee has been apprised of the actual roadmap of how the commissioners intend to move forward and at what point public, the public can actually have their voices heard as various, as well as various interest groups. So there is no roadmap, and it's, well, it's highly dysfunctional. In addition to that, I am, I was shocked and appalled by the horrendous conditions in the current jail, as detailed in the presentation given by our new sheriff, Ruben Marte, on Monday. I mean, we're talking about, you know, oozing green slime that they don't even know what it is. We're talking about spaces between grates and windows that have not been cleaned since the jail was opened, because it was, you have to dismantle the screen to even get in there. We're talking about, you know, feces and urine collecting in cells, and racist graffiti, and hateful graffiti on, in multiple places. It is a dereliction of duty by our former sheriff, Brad Swain, that he let things get to this point. I don't think he's the first, but he's the most recent sheriff who has overseen these horrendous conditions and not done anything to improve them. And I, as a, as a resident and as a representative of the residents of Bloomington, I am tremendously horrified about what has been allowed to happen at the jail. So I'm very, very glad that Sheriff Marte has brought, and his deputies have brought this to the public's attention. I am very pleased that they are actively working to improve the jail conditions to the best of their abilities with the budget they have. I think we, as a community, need to put a high priority on giving them funding so that they can make it habitable, while the saga of to build a new jail or not, and where it should be, and who should be involved continues. While all these conversations happen in the comfort of the Monarch County Courthouse, we have residents who are being held in inhumane conditions as we speak. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I echo the concerns about the current jail. For about six or seven years, I served as a volunteer with New Leaf New Life and conducted enrichment classes inside the jail, and when I stopped doing that, I think it was around two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, when my parents were requiring more care, and I could no longer give up my Saturdays to volunteer. The jail conditions were not in great shape at that time, and I cannot imagine, without further reinforcements and renovations and rehabilitation, that the conditions are any better now. And so I think it is clear that a new jail is required. I think what is missing, and I agree with my colleagues, that talking about it is one thing, but actually sitting down and having the opportunity to be concrete in what we will do about it, it clearly requires cooperation from city and county, and hoping that we can get past some of the barriers that are keeping the conversations from being more productive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, no report for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thanks.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any reports from mayor and city offices. Ah, yes, there is, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Mary, I'm Carmichael, Deputy Mayor. We'll be extremely brief, and I just wanted to thank all of our city workers who were out today in the elements. They weren't just public works, workers, but also our public safety workers, of course, CBU, and I'm sure I've left a bunch of people out, but thank you to everybody who showed up and kept us safe. They got the roads cleared and the sidewalks, and we even had crews downtown clearing the walkways for folks, so just wanted to thank them for being out today and publicly, publicly recognizing them. Thank you.
Great point, thank you. Are there any reports from council committees? Seeing none, let's move into our first period, our first of two periods of public comment. For those who are in chambers, please start approaching the podium and signing in. Mr. Lucas, could you please make an announcement on Zoom?
Yes, there are members of the public on Zoom that would like to comment. You can use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar, under the reactions tab, or more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Just for a quick count here in chambers, how many would like to offer comment on items not on the agenda tonight? One, two, three, four. Okay, I'm seeing five, all right. Let's take three minutes, then. Okay? Welcome, if you would, state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, excuse me, sorry, my name is Greg Alexander. One of my neighbors asked for a new four-way stop sign at Thirteenth and Fairview, specifically trying to slow traffic on Thirteenth Street, and for a moment, it really puzzled me. Thirteenth Street is the epitome of a quiet neighborhood street. I mean, it's only three blocks long. Last summer, my kids went to a day camp, and to get there, my oldest, Fred, rode his own bike. We traveled an extra half-mile each way so that we could get the safety advantage of neighborhood streets, streets like Thirteenth Street. Every morning, we traveled for one block on Thirteenth Street, about three hundred feet. We spent about thirty seconds every morning on Thirteenth Street, thirty seconds, that's a very small amount of exposure. It's a fairly safe street. Nonetheless, one morning, we're more than halfway down that block, and I've already got my arm out for a left turn. Then I hear this roar of a car engine behind me, and I turn to look, this guy's obviously intending to pass on the left. Even though, I'm signaling left, he sees me, I see him, he is obviously playing chicken with me. Fred's right in front of me, and he's getting ready to make that left turn. I don't know if you understand the gravity of that situation. Fred's ten, Fred isn't street smart, he doesn't yet have the habit of checking over his shoulder before making a turn. Sometimes, you just have to yell at your kid. I hate to do it when he's not doing anything wrong. I want cycling to be a fun experience for him, I want him to feel good about his growing skills, but I have no choice, so I scream at him, "Stop, stop, stop, don't turn!" And he listened, thank God, and I still have two children. And this jerk in the car zooms past us, crisis averted. There's all sorts of things to take away from an experience like that. For Fred, it should be a learning moment, but he's not ready for that lesson. This is too much, too fast for him. For most people, it's a quitting experience. They feel the fear and the stress, and they quit. It's just too terrifying. They don't want to expose their family to the impatient jerks that our streets cater to. They get in their car, and sometimes they even become that same jerk. For me, I think about the engineering choices that encourage that kind of behavior. I think about the simple changes which would make it less common, and that's why the Greenways program is important. Its purpose isn't to address our high injury network, but to build a comprehensive network of really high-quality bike and ped routes, the kinds of routes where children can experience their first taste of independence, and its implementation strategy is to use existing low-traffic neighborhood streets to take a good street and make it into a great street. And there is a Fourteenth Street Greenway on the map, and an extension through my neighborhood as well. The planners anticipated this exact problem, and they want to fix it, but it's not part of the high-priority network, because it's a little further from campus and downtown. If you kill the Greenways program, if you bury it under administrative overhead, if you retard its implementation to even slower than the current pathetic rate, they will not even get through the high-priority network, and neighborhoods like mine that are a little bit more distant can just go jump in the lake. Planning staff and consultants are using objective data. If you don't have any idea to actually improve the Greenway system, all you can do is get in the way. Oh, and the intersection of Thirteenth and Fairview, it has a collision last July, or two Julys ago. The objective data suggests it should be a higher priority than Maxwell and Sheridan, which has zero reported crashes in nineteen years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, is it possible to drop off some of the captioning so the timer is more visible? If you could take a look at that issue. And our next commenter, welcome?
Good evening, Council. My name is David Sabog. I live in the current Fifth District, and if I read the maps right, it's still going to be the Fifth District, although we'll lose Isabel. I think I know most of you people. Most recently, I met Ms. Rosenbarger at the Y, and I told her I was going to come address a very important issue. I'm going to talk trash to you people, we're going to talk trash. Now, not on the athletic field, but real trash. Now, I live alone, I don't generate that much trash in recycling. I don't have to put my bins out every week, but I do, because you're charging me for them every week. What I would like is smaller bins. So I called in and said, "Hey, how about smaller bins?" "Sure." "Fifty dollars." "Why in the hell are you going to charge me fifty dollars to exchange my trash and recycling bin? Come on, guys, I want to reduce my costs." So that's the main reason I came today. Another issue, though, I watched your meeting last week. The Cuba Resolution brought back wonderful memories of our Iraq Resolution. I forgot when we did that, but it was essentially that the Bloomington City Council doesn't want us to go into Iraq. Well, the resolution passed, I forgot what the vote was. I voted in favor of the resolution, because I thought it was right, and, but then afterwards, I met a good friend, and my friend said, "Bloomington," he thought my vote was wrong, that the resolution was wrong, because Bloomington City Council does not do foreign policy for the US government. Well, I understand that, but I voted yes for the Iraq Resolution, and I still stand by their vote and thought it was a good vote. Thank you. And let me have new trash bins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Spel. Mr. Lucas, who do we have on Zoom?
No, no hands raised on Zoom at the moment.
Thank you. Additional comments here in chambers? Welcome, if you would please sign in, and then state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Stephanie Hatton. My speech this evening includes quotes that contain profanity. Viewer and listener discretion is advised. The following are recent statements-
Point of order. Could the chair make a ruling on whether or not it's advisable to restate profanity in a public meeting, regardless of the quote? I appreciate what Ms. Hatton's aim is, but at the same time, question the prudence of repeating profanity. That's all, just requesting a ruling, thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
Well, one of our colleagues actually used a word that's not allowed on TV just during her report. In the absence of more well-defined rules, which this body simply does not, has not ever taken up, I would advise that we allow members of the public to speak. It's at the discretion of the chair until we come up with more strict rules. Thank you.
Additional comments from council?
Are you in agreement with Councilmember Volin's suggestion, then, Chair?
I'm seeking additional comment first, but hearing none.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, I'll allow it. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to apologize, since I was the one who used profanity during my report, so apologies.
Thank you. I'll allow it, you'll have three minutes. Can you reset the timer, please?
Viewer and listener discretion is advised. The following are recent statements made primarily in response to my advocacy for public safety in my neighborhood by a traffic commission member who serves in an official capacity for this city, who is intended as a representation of this city and our values. Haters gonna hate, and Bloomington Democrats gonna lick the shit out from between Elm Heights neighborhood's ass cheeks. One of the reasons I suck at organizing is I want to tell people, "Go to the council to help me make the political point that the current fucknuts on there only care about Elm Heights. You all understand that I'm petty enough, I'm counting down the days until I can go collect video of prominent Elm Heights neighbors running the stop sign that they just bought." This final quote, a tweet in relation to the proposed Hawthorne Weatherstone Greenway, was deleted two days ago. It sounds like they are going to savagely penetrate your neighborhood, and I want to know what they're going to do with that. What do you feel when you hear the phrase "savagely penetrate"? When you hear someone talk about shoving down your throat something to which you are opposed? And what would you do now, tonight, if those words suggesting the perpetration of sexual violence had been directed at your neighborhood and by association, you, by a council-appointed commissioner? Or is it that because it's me, and because I live in Elm Heights, it's okay? Consider I'm not elected, I'm a member of the community. Do you think that I pass my time hula-hooping in a hostess dress while vacuuming and baking cakes in the shape of stop signs? Contrary to popular belief, I work for a living. And yet, because of my address, my value as a neighbor is deemed worthless and yet worthy of condemnation. This is not political, it's damn personal. So please, don't talk to me about politics when I have served you well as your pawn, which I'd rather be than your protected proxy. I've watched these efforts to shape Bloomington into an ideological corral. Those who do not agree with a particular way of being are branded regressive and elitist, told to sit down and shut up, made an example of, goaded, except that is not who I'm willing to be, and it is not what I will stand for in my community. The hatred of my neighborhood is blatant, it's toxic, and it's not productive. Don't talk to me about how calling attention to bias in our local government is a matter of political posturing by self-righteous residents living within some untouchable boundary. Don't talk to me about privilege when an individual who has been officially gifted power at that table to serve all residents of Bloomington has been allowed to continue in this official capacity without recourse while making comments alluding to rape.
Ms. Hatton, can you finish up your comments, please? You're at time.
A slap on the hand, a blush, and a hall pass. Residents expect you to lead by example. We expect better, we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hatton. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we have Natalia Galvin.
Ms. Galvin, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Natalia Galvin, and I live on the near west side. I'm here to ask council to remove Mr. Alexander from his council appointment as a commissioner on the city's Bloomington Traffic Commission. At the recognition of President Scambalory in November of twenty-two, during her constituent meeting, I emailed the two thousand and twenty-two council leadership team about my concern about Commissioner Alexander serving on the traffic commission at the pleasure of the city council. Earlier that week, I had an exchange with Mr. Alexander on Twitter after the stop sign vote on Maxwell and Sheridan, when he posted the following quote, "I've never seen so much cowardice as when Isabel Piedmont Smith votes. Never has-" Never has someone so convincingly explained that they understand what a deep betrayal their vote is to all that they hold dear, and so often." End quote. Further in our exchange, Mr. Alexander goes on to say, quote, "With all due respect, taking things away from Elm Heights is exactly how the rest of the city gets help. I will not repeat Mrs. Hatton's statement. Mr. Alexander, as a resident, is certainly entitled to his freedom of speech. I've even agreed with him on some sidewalk issues. However, as I serve at the pleasure of the mayor on a commission, Mr. Alexander serves at the pleasure of city council on the traffic commission and in a privileged capacity as commissioner. His tenor on social media is more than assertive, it is confrontational and bullying. No one should be bullied or harassed for advocating for their neighborhood. They definitely should not be bullied or harassed by a council-appointed commissioner. The ability to be impartial as a commissioner is an important one. Whether I'm advocating for students of color in MCCSC or for better conditions in the jail, whether you live in the near West Side, in Crestmont, in Broadview, in Meilak Heights, in Elm Heights, in Maple Heights, or anywhere else in the city, no resident should be discriminated against because of the area they live in by a council-appointed commissioner, and certainly no one should be bullied or harassed by a council-appointed commissioner. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. Do we have another comment here in chambers? Welcome. If you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eric Oost, and I want to say that this is not a question of abrogating any individual's unassailable right to protected speech. In this case, this case is not ambiguous, however, and there's precedent for you to take on notice of rescinding an appointment to a board or commission. You are caretakers and shepherds of our community's system of government and by extension, the social conversation and then all that flows from being a community of people living in communion and in a shared space. I thought about many things today about what I might say. I think that what we have before us is questionable statements that aren't helpful, that are leading, that are catalyzing increasing levels of toxicity in our community. I'm concerned where this is going to go. I don't think that council members should be subject to this kind of diatribe and castigation. I was hesitant to say this, but I will. Some of you council members have been called turds by the same individual. And there is a person in this community who I believe has been employed as a public defender who said that one of you is a turd. And I am upset, as you might tell from my tone, so I'm going to try to be calm. And I think that you have a charge to represent the community and to set a tone, to lead by example. And so I thank you for allowing me to make this comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oost. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Chuck Livingston is next.
Mr. Livingston, welcome. If you could confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name's Chuck Livingston. I hadn't planned to talk. Last weekend, I did talk to Dave Rollo and Susan Sandberg about the possibility of repeating some of what's been posted on the Internet about my neighbors, and I'm opting not to use that language. Hadn't planned to speak, but I can't let Stephanie stand alone with just a few supporters. But regardless of what you do in your official capacity, you should each be standing in solidarity with her right now. To remain silent while this has happened is really a poor reflection on each one of you. Now, over the years, I've lived in Bloomington forty years. I've taken controversial opinions. I have, in the Herald Times, someone wrote a letter saying I should go to hell. I've heard I would be willing to, you know, on issues, put up with nasty people out there. But am I willing to go through that effort when the person is appointed by the city council? What's going on is now a reflection of the council, and I hope each one of you publicly, not behind the scenes, but publicly, make clear that what's going on is intolerable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Here, comment here in chambers?
I'm Mark Hagerty. We are in the market for a new jail. And I've been in front of this body and several other bodies about the multiple deaths in custody under only the last administration, the first deaths by suicide in our jail that we've ever had, all under this last administration, four of them. Four young men died of suicide, and one, a young black man who just turned eighteen, died of a heart attack in our recovery program after not receiving his heart medication. All of these deaths by suicide and this other death took place after our recovery program was being removed from the jail. The previous administration used our recovery program to put vulnerable people who were incarcerated, who might be contemplating suicide, or were too young to be in the general population, to put them down there in the recovery block where Tanya had created a sanctuary over a fifteen-year period. Now, what happened to me after I reported these deaths to the county Human Rights Commission and this body was I was removed from New Leaf New Life for reporting these things. And I was removed in a secret meeting, and all of us who founded New Leaf New Life were removed from being on the board. And Tanya Karnofsky was removed from being an employee or on the board. This cost people's lives, and it represented a kind of dishonesty that we've become used to, a secret meeting by a not-for-profit that spends government money, continued secret meetings by this same operation, and the government unwilling to listen to people that work in the jail that create these programs. You should be thinking about what kind of incarceration we want in this place. Now, I've got some ideas, but I don't have any listeners. Now, I've spent fifteen years down there, over that, actually, and I'm very concerned that this community, these Democrats, this one-party rule, doesn't have any ears on it, unable to hear what's going on because you don't want to. I'm sorry about being angry. Lost five people to death after this recovery program began to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, next is Joe Lee.
Hello, I am Joe Lee, and I'll have to comment on the jail later because inhumane conditions are inhumane conditions and need to be resolved as quickly as possible. But I wanted to speak to the issue that Ms. Hatton and Ms. Galvin and Mr. Oost brought forward about the kind of language and attitude represented by a member of the traffic commission. My wife was there in the meeting last week, and she was one of the people who presented the resolution for Cuba. And Cuba is, well, let me just say that after that meeting, there was this person who not only saw fit to denigrate the idea of a resolution during the meeting and to also insult city council members specifically, continued in this vein by writing a letter to my wife, and although it did not contain profanity or any kind of allusions to rape or sexual activity, it belittled, it was ageist, it called out that it was a waste of time for a city council to represent something in favor of the people of Cuba. And the people of Cuba have suffered because of this embargo, and we have gone several times, we have Cuban friends, they are important people. If you look at our borders these days, the number of Cubans who are fleeing Cuba because of the repression brought on, even more so by the embargo. It's an important issue, and it isn't to be belittled, whether one thinks it takes too much time or not. It isn't something that is done to stand in the way of legislation. Anyway, I just wanted to say it was shocking to receive this letter, and I have seen in the last few years how debate among the public and, you know, various parties to legislation that the council is taking up. It has gotten to the point that it is no longer about any kind of cogent or passionate argument, it's about name-calling, insulting, and belittling. And I would hope the council would really consider what is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Additional comments here in chambers? Please, if you would, share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Richardson. I stand with Stephanie Hatton tonight, and I would stand with her regardless of where she lives. I think bullies keep bullying until people say enough. We've had enough bullying, and it's always, always the same, the longer they're enabled, the more they bully. And the more they bully, the more they're enabled. And at some point, I don't know if it's rescinding him from the board, I don't have the answer, that's in your hands, but I think people have to stand up and say enough. Enough, we're creating a platform. We've seen it certainly at the national level in our country, we've seen some at the state level, and now it's at the local level, and good people need to say enough. So I'm standing up and saying enough. I don't know if it's penetrating or if it's going to work, but there are people who are not here tonight because they fear that they're going to be on his target list. They don't want to speak out because they don't want to get a personal letter at home, they don't want him videotaping their house, they don't want him stalking them. Where does this end? Bullies keep bullying unless people say enough. I say enough.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Additional comments here in chambers? Additional comments on Zoom? And we are twenty minutes. Seeing no more.
I do have one hand raised on Zoom, if you'd like to.
We are at time right now. Would it be possible for that person to pick up for the second public comment period?
That's up to the council.
If you could possibly message them and let them know to do that?
Happy to do so.
Thank you. With that, let's move into appointments to boards and commissions. First, I wanted to offer a clarifying statement that the council members appointed on January 11th for the council's sidewalk committee for 2023 will begin serving after the 2023 sidewalk report is done. That sounds counterintuitive, but we're expecting a 2023 sidewalk report. The individuals appointed last year are finishing up that project, and then the individuals appointed last week will take over and carry the project forward this year. So I just wanted to offer that clarification. I also wanted to acknowledge the multiple comments tonight regarding an appointment to the traffic commission, and thank you for bringing that to our attention and to let you know that we are in conversation with our attorney-administrator, Mr. Lucas, and have asked him to research possible steps forward. So thank you for that. With that, are there additional appointments to boards and commissions? Seeing none, let's move into legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2301 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Ms. Rosenbarger?
Yes. Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambolari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Anne Flaherty?
Yes.
That passes nine-zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2301, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a .57 acre of property from mixed-use neighborhood scale to mixed-use medium scale regarding 30302 and 314 West First Street, Saint Real Estate LLC petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Sorry. Ordinance 2301 rezones .57 acres from mixed-use neighborhood scale to mixed-use medium scale.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, my fault.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2301 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ms. Scanlon here with us tonight to start us off, if you would, please.
Great, thank you. Right. Thank you, Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager for the Planning and Transportation Department. Tonight, we are looking at a map amendment for three parcels located at 300, 302, and 314 West First Street. You can see located here at the northwest corner of First and Morton Streets at the southwest of downtown. The property is three parcels totaling .57 acres. It's currently zoned MN mixed-use neighborhood scale, and the comprehensive plan designation is mixed urban residential. There's an existing office building there that has recently, or that will be vacated or has recently been vacated. There is not a proposed development for the site currently. Properties to the north are part of the whole world development, Phase One East, and property to the west is the Centerstone Home. There's also an alley to the west that was recently vacated by this body, so the property was moved. The property and this map amendment will go to the center of the alley that you see So the petitioner is requesting, again, a zoning map amendment, otherwise there is a rezone from mixed-use neighborhood scale, which is MN on the map, to mixed-use medium scale, which is MM. As I mentioned previously, the north and west properties are part of Phase One East. Again, to the west is actually the Centerstone property where Centerstone operates, owned by the county, and then the north to be redeveloped as part of the whole world development. There are some differences in the MN, the neighborhood scale district versus the medium scale district. In the existing district, neighborhood scale, one-use dwelling cottage development is listed as conditional, and that use is not allowed at all in the medium scale district. However, the medium scale district adds twelve permitted uses that are currently listed as conditional in the neighborhood scale, and also adds twenty-six additional permitted and conditional uses that aren't allowed at all in the neighborhood scale. So basically, our MN neighborhood scale district is our kind of least impactful, smallest-scale mixed-use district that- that you might see kind of embedded in a neighborhood or immediately adjacent. And then MM, the medium scale, is slightly more intense. So again, the comprehensive plan designates this site as mixed urban residential, and both districts work with that designation. Part of a map amendment is the requiring of right-of-way dedication. So along First Street to the south, there's already an excess of right-of-way there, so no dedication needed. And then along Morton to the east, the petitioner would dedicate roughly six feet of right-of-way, which would be in line with what was dedicated to the north for the Hopewell Development. And again, the vacated alley changed the property line to the west. There are a few dimensional districts as well. In the neighborhood scale district, for example, some of the commercial uses are limited in size when they're single-tenant, and the medium scale doesn't have that same limitation. Again, you can imagine, because neighborhood scale is envisioned to be embedded or immediately adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And then the medium scale allows one additional story and also reduces the rear building setbacks, so slightly intensifying what is allowed. So you can see here, some of those, as I mentioned before, conditional uses going to permit it. So mixed urban residential is the comprehensive plan designation, and the department believes that this petition moves the property closer to the comprehensive plan goals for this district by expanding allowable uses and bulk restrictions within the frame of the mixed urban residential, which discusses development, for example, of two to four stories. And also dedicating right-of-way for room for future public improvements as this area develops is in line with the comprehensive plan. So here are three specific goals. Again, all kind of in the vein of increasing the uses and having right-of-way dedication be positive, working toward these goals. So the Plan Commission found that the criteria and findings that are required for the map amendment were met and when they met in November. And the department believes that this rezone to mixed-use medium scale does match the comprehensive plan designation as well largely by expanding possible uses. Additionally, the areas to the north of this site, also in the Hopewell Phase 1 East, are zoned to mixed-use medium scale already. So this puts those in line with the expected surrounding expansion and redevelopment. And so we think the additional uses that will be added are in line with those that may come into the north and that already exist to the west and south. At its November 24 hearing, the Plan Commission forwarded to the common council with a favorable recommendation and one condition, that right-of-way dedication be required within 180 days of approval. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. And do we have the petitioner with us as well? Yes. Welcome, if you would, share your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Chris Cockram, and I am with the F.C. Tucker Commercial Company, and I'm the representative for St. John Realty. This request is all about the timing. As we know, the redevelopment of this area in the Hopewell site is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do something really great for Bloomington. And the goal of the petitioner is to match the zoning of the Hopewell parcels that connect and around this block. And by changing the zoning to MM, it will only add value to the overall opportunities for the development of this area. And as planning staff stated, the rezone of the site to mixed-use medium scale matches the comprehensive plan. The rezone expands the possible uses and matches the majority of the properties in the area. The rezone would not affect adjacent business, and I would agree as a commercial real estate broker that it would not affect the businesses around there. It would bring the property in line with the zoning to the surrounding properties. The comprehensive plan states that a wide range of land uses are appropriate for this area. And planning staff stated that rezoning to MM would not negatively impact the adjacent property owners. Rezoning the site will further the goals of the comprehensive plan and give the opportunity to provide additional resources for the community. And as I stated earlier, it adds value to the Hopewell site, enhances the different possibility redevelopment options in this area. And in closing, the petitioner has operated a local business here for 30 years and has 20 employees. And they're a very community-minded, family-and-group company here in Bloomington. And they are super excited for the possibilities for the development of this area. And initially, we offered, or the owners of the property, offered the property to the city to purchase. It just kind of made sense to go with it. At the time, it did not work for the city to buy it. And again, the goal of rezoning the property is to be a viable option in the redevelopment process. And again, it's all about the timing to help remove any hurdles in attracting the right developer for the area. And so happy to answer any questions. St. John families here also, they can answer questions as well. Again, I ask that you just give a positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's come to council for questions. Councilmember Volin.
Thanks. It's questions from Ms. Scanlon. Could you sort of, there seems to be a small confusion that it might seem to other people about mixed-use medium scale versus mixed urban residential. Can you sort of, like, why is it that we didn't use the comp plan designation as a UDO designation? Can you sort of explain that? Because it's a little confusing.
Yeah, so we don't typically do that. I don't think that's typical anywhere. Because the comp plan designations are, you know, a guide for what could come in that area for future land use, usually with a 30-year outlook. And then the districts may be more fine-tuned. And so, for example, in one of our larger comprehensive plan designations, Neighborhood Residential, there are a number of zoning districts in that area. So you wouldn't be able to do, it's not a one-for-one drawing of the lines. So more than one zoning district can be appropriate for one of our larger areas designated in the comprehensive plan. So in this case, they do have similar names, so that makes it confusing. A little bit more confusing, possibly. But typically, yes, they don't have, the names don't align because the areas don't match up exactly.
So is it correct to describe a mixed urban residential area as described in the comp plan as a district? It's not a zone, per se. I mean, like, what term do you use to describe?
Yeah, I would say district. Yeah, we don't call it a zone.
Okay. And I assume that there are fewer such districts in the plan than there are total different types of zones.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Sandberg? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sandberg, go ahead.
Thank you. Have there been any nearby neighbors or neighborhoods that have made any objections to this? I would assume it would be an upgrade in, I think the term used, more intensity of development? Is that correct? Any neighborhood?
Sure, yes. No, we have not received any negative feedback. The petitioner can speak to the outreach that they did specifically to the neighborhoods, but we did not.
Okay. I don't know if the petitioner would have any additional information about that.
We did have a neighborhood meeting with McDole Gardens.
Could you identify yourself again?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris Cockram. We did have a meeting with members from, neighbors from McDole Gardens. And there was some concerns of not knowing what's going to happen in that area. So obviously, rezoning, we're not sure what, you know, who might want to be interested in developing this area. So there was some concern there that just, it's hard to predict what's going to happen in all of that area right now. So, but I think that was probably the number-one thing that was on their mind.
All right. And when you say some concern, could you give an idea about how many members did attend this meeting or stated objections?
So we, Isabel was there as well. So we had our meeting, and then we had to reschedule the meeting as well. But so we had about 11 members come initially, and then it started later than I had hoped, and some had stuck around, so I was able to talk with them. And then we rescheduled it and went back out. And also, oh, I jumped onto Isabel's, one of her meetings with Zoom and offered some more comment as well. But it was, I would say, oh, I can't remember. I should have those numbers here. But I mean, there was, you know, maybe half a dozen or so.
Is it fair to say it's mostly members of the McDole neighborhood or Prospect Hill or a combination?
Mostly McDole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Rollo?
Thank you very much. I just wondered, perhaps, Jackie, is there, are there, I see there's three portions on this that are being asked for the rezone. So does this have any effect on businesses or any other buildings around it that are already in existence?
No. So the rezone, the existing building is on two parcels. It covers two parcels. And then there's a vacant parcel immediately to the west, owned by the same property owner. So it's just those three parcels.
Thank you. That was a question and a concern from a constituent that asked the question. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollo?
Ms. Scanlon, my interpretation is, from the neighborhood, the MN to MM, the medium scale, the difference is essentially a story. And it is, and a height difference between 40 in the existing zoning and then 50 feet in the MM, correct? And an accessory structure going from 20 feet to 30 feet. But impervious surface remains the same. Landscaping area remains the same. So it's essentially, we're allowing the petitioner to elevate the building by essentially a story. Is that the gist of this zone?
Yeah, that's correct. So the way that the height is written into Title 20 right now, it's story and height. So right now, the neighborhood scale is three stories not to exceed 40 feet. And medium scale would be four stories not to exceed 50 feet.
And what would be immediately adjacent in Hopewell? What would we, we would see something very, very similar? Is that correct?
Yes. So the zoning district in Hopewell is medium scale. So when we did, when you all updated the map, one of the reasons we proposed for this to stay neighborhood scale was so that it would kind of be in line with existing development. So this and Centerstone were kind of a block of neighborhood scale. Had this been vacant at the time because it's residential high density to the south and commercial, more intense commercial to the east, we probably would have included this, we could have easily included this as medium scale at that time as well.
I see. Okay. And just following up on a couple things. So the one question I had was, and maybe a qualm.
How about a question?
Well, okay. Well, I'll phrase it as a question. Would it be useful in the future, when you're presenting this, to show a potential rendering of the size difference for the lot? So we have a sort of, you know, so we can envision what it looks like on-site? I think that might be helpful. Do you agree?
Yes, if that's something you all are interested in asking for in the future, I'm sure we could do that. Again, this isn't a site plan. This building may not change at all. A new use may go into this building, and there may be no redevelopment. But yes, we can show you the difference between a three-story and a four-story building, if that's helpful.
Okay. And then lastly, you mentioned a site plan. So there will be review of a site plan once it is, that will work through planning?
Yes.
And will require a plan department, the Plan Commission approval?
Yes. If it become, if it is redeveloped, then if it meets the requirements for a site plan, so if it's a change of use or, you know, if they do scrape it and build something new, that will all have to go through the site plan process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. This is for Ms. Scanlon. Can you describe the right-of-way dedication that is consistent with the transportation plan?
Sure. So along Morton Street, so the right-of-way dedication on First is already in excess of what the transportation plan calls for. So they're not dedicating any additional right-of-way on the south side. And then along the east side, we need slightly more right-of-way there based on the transportation plan. So that is an additional six feet. So when we did the plat for Hopewell, it was determined that six feet was what was necessary, or, sorry, the line that is the same on this property as dedicating six feet was determined to be appropriate to be able to meet the transportation plan. So they will just be matching that line. Does that, did that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the report, Ms. Scanlon. Can you explain to me and bring back to my memory the concept or the definition of the 20-minute neighborhood level of service? I'm not so sure I quite remember.
Oh, man, the 20-minute neighborhood. I think there would be others who would probably explain this better than I would. But I believe the 20-minute neighborhood is in reference to being able to walk that distance, things you can walk within that amount of time and having that be able to basically fulfill most of your basic needs. So, you know, like a grocery store or other day-to-day things that you need to be able to accomplish, that you can do that within 20 minutes of your home on foot. I could be, that could be wrong, but I believe that's what.
Okay. Well, there was something that's under the comp plan. And I kind of had forgotten about it. So I just wanted to bring that back to memory. And I'm sure it has to do with bike-competitive mobility.
Yes. So it's, right, not necessarily walking, but that you are able to access those things within 20 minutes of your home. And so kind of similar to a little bit of like the node idea that we've talked about in the past as well.
Okay, thank you. And it also says the comp plan specifically addresses certain things. And I am going to go down to the diversifier of housing, BGO 4.4. And specifically, it says, "We encourage a range of diverse housing, but with emphasis on affordable and workforce housing." And I guess, again, my question is, how are we? What is the plans in order to emphasize that? I'm assuming that's our preference. Not deference, but our preference. But how do we go about that?
Sure. So the rezone specifically doesn't address incentives, right? Or requiring or seeking affordable housing. But by increasing the, increasing the bulk that's allowed here will allow for more units to be able to be built here than may otherwise be built and also allowed for the incentives that could be added to a development or this to be completely scrapped and turned into housing to be slightly larger if they do use the incentives for affordable housing to gain extra stories.
And that may not be specific to this particular rezone. But is that a goal overall of the comp plan? Is what we're saying?
Yes.
That will, that will work in this specific rezone?
Yes. So we've tried to take that goal from the comprehensive plan and put that into the UDO in the regulatory framework so that when things develop, we have a better chance of meeting some of those goals.
Okay. And in a future conversation, I'd like to hear more about how we can kind of emphasize that or what's our goal to get there as opposed to some other possibilities.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional round one questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. I know the answer to this, but just for the benefit of the public and my colleagues. Ms. Scanlon, could you please remind us what is around this parcel currently across the street and, you know, just anywhere adjacent to it?
Sure. So to the east is Kroger. So you have Morton Street and the B-line, and then Kroger. And then to the north is, all of those buildings have been scrapped. So that is where the Hopewell, the bulk of the Hopewell Phase 1 East redevelopment will take place. And then to the west is the county-owned building that is currently... And then to the west is the county-owned building that is currently operated by Centerstone and then the small Centerstone building at the corner of Rogers and First. And then to the south, it's actually, excuse me, zoned residential high density. But I believe it's some personal service, small business and kind of warehouse buildings on the south side of First Street there.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes. Councilmember Sims brought up an interesting question that got me thinking about neighborhood concerns about upgrading this to the MM and not where it is now with the MM and where it is now with neighborhood scale. So with our incentives that we have in place for affordability and sustainability, it's to offer anyone who's developing a multifamily structure there an additional floor or additional bulk on the footprint. Would there be some merit in keeping this to a smaller, less intense scale as a buffer between the neighborhoods who may have concerns about buildings going up there that might be tall and dwarfing, dwarfing the current existing profile of those neighborhoods? Because of the fact that we do have those incentives in place that allow multi-stories to go up if they'll check off the boxes for affordability and sustainability.
Sure. I think it's a good question. And there are neighborhoods in this vicinity. But I'm going to, let's see if I can share this quickly. There aren't residents immediately adjacent. So I think you all can see this. But, so here's the petition site, these three parcels here. And immediately to the south, these are businesses. And it's zoned residential high density, which is five stories base. So if this area goes to redevelop, it's going to be intense. So the nearest single-family portion of the neighborhoods who have shared concern are actually on the south end of this large block, so a block away. And again, are actually zoned residential multifamily. So those areas could redevelop at some point as well. So I do think we tried to carry, you can see MN, the neighborhood scale, carried this down along Rogers because it will be across from some of the single-family homes on the west side of Rogers, so leaving, not bringing in the slightly more intense district here. But I think in this particular location, it's immediately adjacent to MM as well as the Centerstone property and also the surrounding, the surrounding zoning is five-story and downtown. So I think I understand the concern in general when you're talking about, you know, having areas that will be more intense close to neighborhoods. But this actually isn't really even adjacent. And by leaving it MN, we are actually like leaving it much lower than what the surrounding areas can do by right without incentives. So I think that's part of why we think it's, it's okay to let it go up.
Thank you. And so there already is buffering there for any residential neighborhood that would be concerned that all of a sudden a five-story building is going to go up.
Yes. So there is neighborhood scale mixed use along Rogers on the east side there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We have slid into round two questions. So, but are there additional questions? Okay. Let's go to seeing none. Let's go to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to offer comment on ordinance 2301? Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. If there are members of the public on Zoom that would like to comment on this ordinance, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate that, please send us a chat to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay. Comment here in chambers. If you would, share your name for the record and then you'll have three minutes.
Dave Askins with V-Square Bulletin. Tonight's question that I have is why, I guess, well, by way of background, a lot of times when there's a rezon request, it's made because the zoning for that property has been in place for a really long time and things have happened and, you know, a request is made to meet the changed conditions. In this instance, I think it was the case that we had an opportunity to zone this the way we wanted it really recently. We settled on the zoning for the Hopewell neighborhood. We did the rezoning map. So at that time, I imagine the planning staff maybe contemplated what, what the zoning for this parcel should be and landed on the zoning that exists now. And I'm wondering if there was, I mean, what was the thought process for the planning staff when they decided not to zone it in the manner that they, that is currently in front of the council as a request? So why didn't we just rezon it this way a couple of years ago when we had the chance? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom? Anyone else here in chambers? Seeing none. Let's come back to council for additional questions. Mr. Rollo?
I think it's a worthwhile question. Mr. Askins asked, Ms. Scanlon, why was this not rezoned before when you had the opportunity? Was it an oversight or was there something else in mind?
Sure. I already addressed it, but maybe I wasn't very clear. So I will try it again. This, because it was an existing, an existing business as well as Centerstone, that because of the existing development that existed on these sites, we decided to leave them as MN, which is the same as the properties on the south side of First at the corner of Rogers, to kind of leave those consistent. As I said before, I think at the time, for example, had this been vacant, we may have, we could have easily made this be medium scale as well for all the reasons that we've said tonight, that we think it's appropriate with the high density to the south and the downtown to the east. I think it was just part of looking, looking at it as a large group. We were looking at existing conditions for this particular portion of Phase One East. And it kind of could have gone either way because kind of back to Mr. Volin's question from the beginning, they both make sense for the comprehensive plan designation. And we went with the kind of less intense and could have gone with medium scale at that time and do still think that that's appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions?
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Just following up on the same point. I assume this is the case, Ms. Scanlon. If staff had pursued a rezon in that vein at that time, there would not have been a mechanism for the additional right-of-way dedication that would come with approval of this ordinance tonight. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none. Is there any final comment? Councilmember, I'm sorry?
Did we go to the public?
We did. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. I'm in favor of this rezon. I was part of a neighborhood meeting, first of all, our regular neighborhood meeting where we discussed it. And then a smaller group that discussed the matter with Mr. Cochrane. And there was some concern about what might be put there and what could be allowed there under MM that is not allowed under MN. However, I, and I live in that neighborhood. I live in McDoll Gardens. However, I, I think because there are no single-family homes or even duplexes or triplexes right near the site, I don't, I guess I don't share the concern that there could be something located there that would have a negative impact on McDoll Gardens. So it is across the street from a business, a parking lot and a little bit further west on First Street, a department building. So it's not, I don't even know if those are actually part of McDoll Gardens. But it's, I, I don't think the fear that something that will negatively impact McDoll Gardens is founded, quite frankly, with all respect to my neighbors. So I, I am in favor of rezoning this so that there are more allowable uses and a little bit more compact urban form, which I think is, is good planning in this day and age, especially with the climate emergency, what it is. I think we need to, to increase density where we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Rollo?
I have a similar comment. Some sites are suitable for density and I think this is one. I think it's in the community interest. The dimensional standards change of one story, I think, is fine and it matches Hopewell. It's not going to impact adjacent properties. The impervious surface is not increasing. And, you know, density in this area is a good idea for businesses to be viable, for effective public transportation, for walkable, bikeable access to resources downtown. Better to build up than out. So I'll be supporting this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none. Let's move to a vote. So will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2301?
Councilmember Sandberg? Yes. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes. Thank you. That passes nine zero. So, and thank you all.
Madam President, I move that resolution 2303 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes. Thank you. That passes nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2303 to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation regarding economic development, local income tax distribution to support transit projects. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution approves of an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. The agreement includes a commitment by the city to pay BPTC not less than $3,806,100 in economic development, local income tax funds each year beginning in 2023 and ending in 2027 to enable BPTC to pursue various economic development transit initiatives. Five such projects are identified and listed as priorities in the agreement. BPTC would be required to report to the common council during the annual budget process as well as engage in meetings with city administration on the appropriate expenditure of this funding.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that resolution 2303 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I've been, Ms. Kate, we have, please?
Good evening, councilmembers. Beth Kate, Corporation Council. And I believe John Connell is also here available on Zoom if you have questions after. I will just briefly probably recap what Clerk Bolden just said about this. Resolution 2303 would approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. In a nutshell, the agreement provides for the city's distribution in 2023 of an amount of economic development, local income tax revenue to BPTC to support economic development, public transit initiatives. It contemplates similar distributions in the remaining years of the agreement, 2024 through 2027. The annual amount, $3,806,100, reflects the administration's proposed allocation of ED-LIT funds to transit projects that was shared with council when it voted for the ED-LIT rate on May 4th, as well as the BPTC budget approved by council for 2023. Distributions in 2024 through 27, as you see in the agreement, are contingent on annual appropriations by council through the budget process. And the agreement requires BPTC to provide counsel in the city administration with detailed progress reports to assist that annual budget process. If, if in a given year, the appropriation did not occur, that doesn't affect the other years of the agreement. It doesn't automatically terminate the agreement. So each year stands alone effectively. The agreement says that if any of the, the projects that are listed in the agreement become infeasible, then the parties will determine alternative projects. Those projects are the ones also that were presented to council at the time that the ED-LIT was debated and voted on by council. So you're seeing those prioritized in here. The agreement will allow carryover of funds from one year to the next and provides for an annual distribution of this fund, this funding in March. Okay. So it provides for the timing of the distribution. And then it provides for various means of transparency and accountability regarding the use of funds. As I mentioned before, there's a detailed progress report, which will come to the city. That will be incorporated, the content of that will be incorporated into the annual budget presentation for BPTC. There are biannual meetings with the city and regular dialogue in between to just allow for conversations about progress on the projects. BPTC asks the city administration to enter into this agreement to reflect its support for multi-year funding for transit projects, which by their nature are going to require multi-year funding. And of course, we do support those projects. Council expressed its support for those projects with the ED-LIT vote. And that's basically what this very short agreement provides. I'm happy to answer questions. I see that Mr. Connell is here as well. If we can help answer any questions, we're here.
Thank you, Ms. Kate. Mr. Connell, did you have anything to add?
No. Good evening, John Connell, General Manager, Bloomington Transit. You know, we're, we're fast-tracking these projects. So actually, we've already obligated some of this money. 1.7 million's been obligated in a purchase order for the local share for eight battery electric buses. So we look forward to formalizing this agreement and continuing moving forward.
Thank you. Let's come to council for questions. Councilmember Smith?
Hello. Mr. Connell, tell me, does this enhance the ability of persons with disability and/or elderly to ride the transit system?
One of the projects we have dedicated within the LIT money, approximately $93,000 to assist with discounted fares for elderly and disabled members of the community. So we have a list of nonprofit agencies that we sell discounted fare passes, tickets to. So those proceeds will go to continue that program. So to answer your questions, yes.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none. Shall we go to public comment then? So we invite those in chambers, if you would, who have, who would like to comment on this, to please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, would you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. Anyone who would like to comment? Please let us know by using the raise hand feature in your control bar, by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. Any comments in chambers? I'm not seeing any on resolution 2303. Mr. Lucas, anything on Zoom? Okay. Let's come back to council then for additional questions. Seeing none. Is there final comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you to the administration and to Mr. Connell and the Bloomington Transit Board for working on this agreement. And it's very exciting to see these funds move forward. This was definitely a big part of the reason why I supported the increased economic development, local income tax last May. And I'm excited. supported the increased economic development local income tax last May, and I'm excited to improve transit in Bloomington for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on resolution 23-03?
Yes. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to skip Councilmember Smith and go on to Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
And that makes it nine zero. Thank you all very much.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2206 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
That's nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2206, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, general revenue annual appropriation bonds of 2022, sorry, together with all investments earnings thereon for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to the costs of certain capital improvements for public safety facilities and paying miscellaneous costs in connection with the foregoing and the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof, and approving an agreement of the Bloomington Redevelopment Commission to purchase certain property. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance makes an additional appropriation to be provided for out of the proceeds of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, general revenue annual appropriation bonds of 2022, authorized by ordinance 2230, together with any interest earnings thereon, which will be applied to finance costs of constructing, renovating, replacing, repairing, improving, and/or equipping certain facilities for the city's police and fire department, together with the cost of issuance thereof. It also approves of a purchase agreement between the City of Bloomington's Redevelopment Commission, the City of Bloomington, and CFC LLC for the purchase of a portion of the showers building complex for $8.7 million.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2206 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Lucas, could I ask, could you, if memory serves, we were in the middle of amendment one, when we broke last week. Is that correct?
Yes, the council had introduced amendment one, had asked questions on that amendment, had gone to the public for comment, and returned to the council for further questions or comment. If the council would like to pick things up from that point, that would be appropriate. I'm not sure if the administration has any new updates to provide since last week, but that's where council left things off last week on this item.
Why don't we check in with administration and then come back and continue with questions on amendment one? So?
Hi, Mary Catherine Carmichael, Deputy Mayor. I do have some very brief prepared remarks tonight. Is this an appropriate time for that?
Please go ahead, and then we'll go quickly to questions after that.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for another opportunity to speak to the merits of acquiring the western portion of Showers Plaza for use as our new Bloomington Police Headquarters and home for our Bloomington Fire Department Administration. I'll be brief. At issue this evening is the purchase of the building, yes, but more than that, too. Tonight's decision will set the tone of our public service delivery for decades to come. The questions I encourage you to ask yourselves are, does the Third Street facility set the tone we want for our police department and fire administration in 2023 and beyond? Does it integrate our public safety workers into the greater community, or does it isolate them? Does it provide an attractive working environment for both sworn and civilian workers? Will it attract new employees or discourage them? Do you want to prepare our public safety providers for the future with room to expand and embrace new approaches to public safety delivery? We've provided you with professionally developed information about both facilities. Based on those numbers, we believe it's unwise to continue to put tax dollars into an outdated, unsound building that will likely continue to flood even with significant investment in a perimeter drain estimated at a cost of over $600,000. The idea of doubling down with an addition to a failing facility is doubly unwise. The locations of both facilities have pros and cons. We are confident that any issues that might arise at a new location are manageable. There is no such thing as a perfect location. Moving to showers, however, offers something that a current BPD building simply cannot offer: possibility. This is not only about physical space, but about integrated government and progressive police policy practices that can be successfully supported. So what this appears to boil down to is a question of status quo or the continuation of positive change. Our public safety folks are exemplary, due in no small part to their willingness to adapt to change. Just in the last decade, they have adjusted the way they do their jobs to include body cameras, downtown resource officers, social workers, community service specialists, new technologies, all resulting in a Kalia certified, nationally accredited department for the first time. It's said that people hate change, but perhaps what we really hate is loss. Buying a new car is a change, but if it's an improvement over our last vehicle, that's not seen as a loss, but a gain. So we embrace that change. In this case, anyone who's toured both buildings can see that the showers building offers a significant upgrade in working conditions, a gain, but is being viewed as a loss by the FOP. What is actually being lost? It's not about the buildings. I think it's about a sense of loss. This is a loss of familiarity. It may even feel like a loss of autonomy, and it's accompanied by much that is new and unknown. We strongly believe, including our two outstanding chiefs who are here this evening, directly responsible to oversee and provide the 24/7 protection of our public safety, that the future of public safety service delivery lies in the purchase of the showers building, which moves us in the direction of integrated community policing. We've provided you with extensive analysis and numbers, and we believe they make a clear case for this purchase. But in this case especially, even though the numbers tell a very good story, they don't tell the entire story, and the numbers shouldn't be the only consideration. Finally, I want to note that this administration, with council support, has provided more support for public safety workers than any other in the history of this city. And that, too, was a change. Thank you. I have our consultants and staff available to address any questions or concerns you might have outstanding this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before we go to questions?
Not a question.
Not a question.
I'm wondering if we could get a brief recap of where we are and what amendment one says.
That's what we got.
All right.
And again, thank you for that reminder, but just to reorient the conversation, amendment one to ordinance 2206, the synopsis reads as follows. This amendment removes language from the appropriation ordinance related to a redevelopment commission purchase agreement for a, for a portion of the showers building complex at a purchase price exceeding $5 million. The intent behind the removal of this language is to indicate that the council does not approve of that agreement. It also makes clear that the additional funds to be appropriated by appropriation ordinance 2206 shall not be used for the purpose of paying costs associated with the acquisition of any portion of the property comprising the existing showers building complex not currently owned by the city. Does that help? Yes, thank you. With that, let's come to council for questions. Councilmember Volin?
Thank you. I'm not sure who to address this question to, but under a consolidated city hall where this is approved, what will it take to maintain the city's Kalia accreditation? I don't know if that's a question for Chief DeKoff. Like, is there anything to the redesign that might jeopardize the accreditation? Can you talk about that?
Good evening, Mike DeKoff, Police Chief. Kalia is all policy-driven, and so it's, it's a complete review of our policies. They do come and do site visits and look at, you know, the building and things like that, but it's mostly on best practices on policy development.
So is, is there reason to believe that our Kalia accreditation will be affected, regardless, depending on which location we choose?
Probably not. I mean, there are things that, there are policies on within the building, like the evidence room, if we would have a holding cell or something like that, that we have to have policies on. So as long as we, as long as we follow the Kalia certifications with regards, for instance, with showers on the evidence, then we're not, we're not at any risk of, of losing our accreditation.
Thank you. I've got another one, but I can wait.
Councilmember Sandberg, and then Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. We've heard a little bit about community policing and the kudos to our current police department, our chief, and a former mayor, actually, where the community policing began with downtown resource officers and adopting the Obama's 21st Century Plan. So we're getting all this. Yes, we have a great police department. We've made great strides. We've made great progress. And yet, for the first time, I'm hearing more about this integrated community policing, that it all seems to be, we, we put it all in the same place, and we work with fire and police, and the police works with, directly with the administration. Is that somehow, is there an insinuation that there is a need for police reform that we, as a community, and we as several administrations now, have already been addressing in a very positive and, and, and progressive manner?
Mary Catherine Carmichael, Deputy Mayor. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say reform. I would say evolution, and it continues. It's been evolving for some time, and it will continue to evolve, just as best practices in policing have evolved over time.
Okay, it's just a new argument that I'm hearing that, for the first time, and it doesn't seem to sit with what our police department currently is, but that's a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. So I have a number of questions this evening, but they're all sort of all over the board, but because of this amendment, they all relate to showers in some aspect. And this particular amendment will remove that from the appropriation ordinance. So sort of by default, all the questions have to come under this amendment. The first of which is, if this amendment passes, and the, but the appropriation ordinance also passes, the RDC's decision to purchase the showers west portion of the building would not be approved and therefore could not go forward. But of course, other projects could, that were listed in the, I suppose, anything within the legal limits of what the bond language itself said, or the appropriation language, or both. So my question is, if the council does not approve, or sorry, if the council does approve this amendment, passes the amendment, and passes the ordinance, and it's not inclusive of the showers purchase, could you explain to us what projects the administration will plan to undertake? And how will those differ from the current proposal? For example, where will the fire headquarters be located? Things, things like that. But I'm looking for a full accounting, actually, of what, if, if you know it, of what you intend to spend. Sorry, I'm looking at Mary Catherine Carmichael, and she is reading my words on the prompter. It's all very meta. I welcome, welcome your input when you, when you can. Thanks.
Mary Catherine Carmichael, Deputy Mayor. I'm sorry, could I get that, just like maybe in one question, please?
Yes. If, if the appropriation ordinance has passed, not inclusive of the showers purchase, can you let us know what the administration will plan to undertake with respect to all major facilities projects?
Sure. Yes and no. I can give you, we have kind of a list of options at this time, but final decisions haven't been made. We would, of course, have to find a place for our fire administration. There are a couple of options there, some of which will depend on what they prefer, I think, and what will work best for their operation. Certainly, we need to repair Station 1 now that we found out that we can do that. That was in question for a while, as you recall. We weren't sure what was going to happen with that flooding. Station 3 certainly needs work, so there are some options there as far as how aggressively we approach that. Trying to think, what else am I forgetting? Oh, training and logistics, yeah. Build out Training and Logistics Center, and that actually could be a place where a fire admin ends up, although the location is not ideal for them. So probably some more discussion there.
Thank you. And with Station 3 in particular, our repair and a new facility both on the table, if, if, if what I shared earlier comes to pass, appropriation ordinance passes without showers being included?
Yes.
Okay. And, and with respect to that choice, and with respect to the choice of the location of fire headquarters, either co-locating with the police, current police headquarters site, or somewhere different, or the training facility, sorry, Training and Training Center, is there a more likely option? Are there sort of all options on the table you're not sure yet?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't, I'm not aware of any tendency one way or the other. Chief, do you want to address that?
I thought I recalled at a, just for context, I thought I recalled at a previous meeting, maybe in December, maybe the mayor, maybe somebody else suggesting that most likely the fire headquarters would be co-located with the training facility, but I might be misremembering that.
That's a disadvantage of a newer deputy mayor.
Good evening. Jason Moore, Fire Chief. I think what Deputy Mayor Carmichael said is very true. We're not fully sure. We never built the studies out to identify what would be the cost benefit, but the current plan would be one of these other projects we would have to be added to. We do not have any location at this point. We're in a temporary headquarters. So it could be any of the approved projects. We may have to consider the cost benefit and pros and cons of co-locating admin with one of those other projects, which would be the Training Logistics Facility, or potentially the new Station 3, if that gets put back on the table. What I can tell you is there is not enough space to build out at the current headquarters site. The, what we're referring to is Station 1 now, only had a few hundred square feet for admin. That is not going to cut what we're trying to do. And we know that is not a viable option with the footprint of the building and all the other limitations of that structure. So it would have to go in one of the other projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. This may be redundant, but just since four, a week has passed. Ms. Carmichael, if this amendment passes and the showers purchase is removed from the appropriation ordinance, does Mayor Hamilton intend to expand the current police station?
No.
Okay. Given that, that's the case, if we don't purchase the showers building using these bond funds, what funding would be available to provide BPD more space, either under this administration or a future administration?
Right. Let me go back to my last answer just really quick and say, not an addition, a renovation that would take place. But to your next question, I believe that you would have to issue bonds. I think Jeff Underwood is on this call and could probably speak more completely to that question, because I have a feeling you'll have follow-up.
Mr. Underwood?
Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Yes, the possible additional funding would be a general obligation bond that would also include a property tax rate that would be utilized to repay that, similar to what we did with the $2,5 million issues early last year to fund that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Please. Just to follow up to that, where would that be built? Where would the new square footage for the police station be built if not at the existing headquarters? What Mr., what Mr. Underwood said was that there would be a general obligation bond in order to, if, I hope I'm understanding it correctly.
I think there's been a little misunderstanding.
All right, please.
I speak to that. Yeah, I think Councilmember Piedmont Smith's question was, where would additional money come from?
Oh, to buy the building?
Exactly.
Oh, 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 okay.
So, does that help?
Yeah, that's, 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 yeah, sorry. No, I appreciate that. And I have one more question. Why, if, I mean, the, this, the existing police station is described at once as- Why, if, I mean, the existing police station is described at once as going to be sold, and yet, it's also a, an undersized, outdated building with significant deficiencies, including the ongoing threat of flooding. Why wouldn't we install a perimeter drain just so that it could be sold, so that we can eliminate the question? I mean, which is it?
Thank you for the question. I'm not a real estate agent, but I have a hard time imagining that that building would be considered a useful building as it's constructed, and I think the value would be in the land.
Well, but, I mean, first of all, the fact that we're talking so negatively about the building is going to decrease its market value.
Not if you're focusing on the land, right? The land is going to retain its value.
Okay. But secondly, why is it that we found a way to repair the flood issues that were on the surface of Station 1, one block north, but we haven't, we still don't have confidence in the flood-proofness of the building, which is also over the culvert, maybe, Chief Moore?
That's a great question, and thank you for asking that. And the answer is, we've given up on the basement of Station 1, so that is...
You mean, wait, the basement of Station 1 or the police station?
The basement of Station 1.
There is a basement there?
Yes, and that was completely flooded, and that also happened to house the electricals, and anyway, I won't digress into all of that. Anyway, but, there's no plan to give up on the basement at police headquarters, so that would continue to be an issue. Does that answer quite a bit?
It helps, but I'd like to hear Chief Moore, too.
Good evening. I just wanted to point out that the only reason we're willing to consider this is modeling, which is not 100% guaranteed, is a high probability...
Modeling, or?
The modeling provided by CBU, that we should not have the same flood issues that we saw in the last flood, but the biggest thing is that we put together a plan and eliminated the basement completely. So a study of how that flood affected that building, it all came from inside the building, it did not come from outside necessarily, and I'll just give a good example. The night of the flood, when we went back, we had to open the bay doors to let the water out, so the water actually did not come up over the foundations, and it actually came inside the building through the drainage systems, so we're fixing it by saying there will not be another basement and redesigning the entire drainage system, which is very expensive.
Does that, does Station Number 1 have a perimeter drain?
It does. In fact, we've already tried some of the more traditional fixes, they've actually dug up around our entire foundation, put in a new perimeter drain, and we still had the flooding issue. So that also called into question, what's the validity of an actual repair? We've already tried that at our current place, and we still have these issues.
I mean, but in the committee hearings, the ad hoc committee hearings that we held, Deb Koontz said that perimeter drains work, and that if we were to install one at the police station, it would, it should eliminate the remaining flooding issues, and I gather that they're not substantial anymore, there's just still the pall of it. I see Ms. Koontz is on the screen, too, but what do you say to that?
I don't want to speak for Ms. Koontz, but I could say "should," and that's where we're dealing, "should fix." All of our repairs should have fixed our headquarters as well, and yet, we're here talking now that I need to replace it, because it did not fix it.
Thank you. Ms. Koontz, do you have something to add? Thank you, Mr. Chief Moore.
Yeah, I'd be happy to add on to that. So, one, the solution when we were in the ad hoc committee, when we talked about the perimeter drain, we also talked about the need to make sure that we have a waterproofing product like a bentonite, which expands when water comes up against it, so it's got to be more than, in my opinion, it has to be more than just putting in the drain tile, it has to be a waterproofing solution as well, so that's a combination, so that is important in the distinction of, as we've talked before, you know, what's the scope of the work. The other aspect of that that's critical at the police station is that where the foundation is right now, if there is a drain tile that's put in at the footing, that it would have to be pumped up to tie in directly to the existing storm system, so, because of the height difference in those two, so that would be another consideration for that.
Okay, I mean, do we know what the, is the cost more than $400,000 for such a system? How much more?
It is, so, I actually ran, if, I was comparing, after the meeting, you had asked about, you know, what is the cost for that, because I think it was shown as $400,000, so I pulled in my cost estimators inside JS Health, and they identified a cost of almost $700,000 just to put in the drain tile, the cistern, and the connected, excluding the waterproofing, so you have a comparable number to the $400,000.
So would you say, then, that the total cost for waterproofing that building would be more like a million dollars?
It'll be somewhere between $700 and $1 million. I don't think it'll be quite a million, but it'll be close.
Very good. Thank you. I have other questions, I'll withhold them. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I'm trying to make fiscal sense out of why, if the council chooses not to purchase showers for the police, which frankly, I don't feel is the right thing to do, but if we don't, and will only then use the EDLIT dollars that were earmarked for police and fire, only for to renovate the current Third Street headquarters, but not to do an addition. Now, many of the current plans that we've seen as to how BPD would like to do this would be contingent on having a connection from the current building to an addition, that would be part of the renovation costs that we're all looking at. So to me, it just seems more cost-effective to do it all at the same time, and not just say, "Well, we're only going to renovate, we're not going to add on," when doing it both together might actually be the most fiscally sensible thing to do, for those of us that feel very strongly that headquarters here at showers is not the way to go. Any answer for why the refusal to consider an addition with the money that's earmarked for police and fire, specifically for police in this case?
Mary Catherine Carmichael, Deputy Mayor. Just things we've stated before, we don't believe in the overall quality of the building, don't think that's a wise investment, and don't feel good about putting that forward, so would not plan to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I'm not sure who this question is to, but because of the different things that have happened, you know, over the last few years, with retribution against police officers and their headquarters, in the country, Cemetery Road, FBI headquarters, do we think that it's going to make the area safer if we have the police officers housed here at showers? Will the employees feel safer? Will the farmer's market feel safer? I don't, and I don't know the question to that, but I had a very smart person ask me that question, and so I thought I would ask that out in, you know, in a public meeting. You know, that's sometimes a worrisome thing that has happened with tragic results.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Smith. I really can't speak to other people's feelings, that's kind of an individual thing. I'm sure there'll be people on both sides of that fence, feelings are as individual as each of us is, so I don't have a good way to address that.
Well, thanks, I, it was just that kind of question that was seeming like something needed to be aired, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollit?
Well, I would just say that from what I've found, that it, 100%, a unanimous number of officers in the police force think it's unsafe, and one of the reasons they think it's unsafe is because of the ingress egress, the location. You have to negotiate crossing the beeline, they have to negotiate going down an alley, they have to, they end up on materials that are not really designed for them to go high speeds, as Third Street is. And so what I'm wondering is, I'm trying to grapple with this, and the administration has sort of been discounting that as a problem, and I wonder if, has there been a traffic study done? Has the administration actually done the traffic study that explores this possibility of, you know how many squad cars, well, let me put it this way, have you counted the number of cars going in and out of the existing station? Per day?
I have not, but I might ask Deb Koontz to weigh in on this as well, I know that she's been studying the ingress egress issues. Can I hand off to you, Deb?
Of course, yeah. Yes, I can confirm that a traffic study has not been done, and so I think that's the question, but there's not been an official traffic study done in that area.
Then how can you have any confidence that the existing infrastructure is capable of safely being available for the police to use?
Well, the question, I believe, that has been asked is really about the amount of ingress and egress capabilities that they have, and particularly if there is blockage at certain, you know, if areas get blocked, how is there other areas? So that is where the focus has been, in ensuring that they have not only the safe parking that they need, but also that they can get in and out of that space without being blocked off, and they have many ultimate ways out.
But wouldn't that require a quantitative analysis? You need to count them, and you need to find out the existing station compared to the proposed location, do you not? How else can you know?
Studies are always possible, right? I mean, studies give you more and more information. Traffic studies, many times, are about how much traffic is going in and out of the area, but it would be based on existing, you know, a lot of those traffic studies have to do with actually putting out counters and assessing how much traffic is actually there.
Yes, it's a very simple thing. I mean, we do it all the time in neighborhood streets.
But a study has not been done to this date.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Chief Decoff?
Mike Decoff, Police Chief. So, our current facility has two ways in and out, showers has two ways in and out. We have a major sidewalk through the park that the officers cross all the time. You know, we train our officers to be very cautious when they drive, so I'm sure that there are things, and we've had internal discussions about different things that can be done to mitigate or make notification as we might approach the beeline trail. And so, as Deb has stated, we have not done traffic counts, I'm not aware of any traffic counts that have been done at showers, but we have had internal discussions about different ways that notifications can be made about approaching vehicles to the beeline.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand. I don't understand why a traffic count wasn't done. If we're to evaluate the safety, and 100% of your officers say that it's unsafe, and that's the reason that they say it's unsafe, is the ingress egress. When I visited the station, there was a call, and they were in their squad cars and on Third Street in seconds. There was nothing to stop them from exiting and getting out at high speed to get to that emergency, whatever it was. It seems inconceivable that we don't have a traffic study to determine the relative safety, since this is absolutely, absolutely essential, it seems to me. The safety component of whether this building is functional or not resides on a quantitative analysis of some sort, it seems to me, and I just wonder, how could this be overlooked?
Well, I wasn't involved in any discussions about traffic counts, so I'm not sure where that discussion went, but I can tell you that at our current location, we have people walking down the middle of the parking lot, there's a lot of student housing around there, so we have pedestrian traffic in that area, and the officers, they tend to manage that quite well.
Point of information, are there data available that show 100% response rate from police officers with every single response saying that ingress and egress is unsafe at the new location? Because that was stated twice, and I'm curious to see that data, if that exists.
I'm not aware that we have any data like that.
I've spoken to representatives from the police union, and they say that all of the officers are opposed.
Okay, I suppose I have questions for the police union, for that survey data. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on this thread. So in past meetings, Chief Decoff, you've mentioned that most police responses to emergency calls happen from out in the community as opposed to coming from headquarters. Do you know approximately what percentage of emergency response calls actually do depart from headquarters? Either percentage or, yeah, number per day estimates?
I can get that information, too, I don't have it with me right now.
Okay. Do you have a rough estimate of the percentage that leave from headquarters versus out in the community?
I would say maybe 20% to 30% of the calls, and that's just a guess.
Sure. Thank you. My understanding from residents of Bryant Park, and from having been a Bryant Park resident and a regular user of Washington and Lincoln Streets, is that officers make frequent use of those two streets in particular to get around town, is that in line with your understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay. And Bloomington Transit Headquarters is across the street on Washington, would you consider that to be a high pedestrian location?
Yes.
Okay, and you're also adjacent to a park with a playground for small children, would you consider that to be, that's on Lincoln Street, a high pedestrian location?
Yes.
Okay. And when was the last time a traffic study, a quantitative analysis of conditions of ingress and egress of police officers conducted at the current facility?
I don't have that information, because I don't do traffic studies.
Okay, so to your knowledge, no study has been conducted there?
I don't know that a study's been done, you'd have to ask someone that does those studies.
Okay, thank you.
Is there someone who would want to comment on whether or not studies have been done? I'm not seeing anyone step up.
Point of order. Can we clarify, a traffic study is a term that implies sort of, I mean, as opposed to traffic counts, is Councilor Rollit looking for simple counts on streets, or a study of how officers arrive and depart from headquarters? Can you clarify that?
I think for a $24 million expenditure, I'd like to see an in-depth analysis.
Of what?
Of the problem of ingress egress at this building compared to what we know of the existing structure. That includes the counts, the number of cars coming and going, the speed at which they operate when they leave, you know, maybe an analysis, as Councilmember Flaherty suggested, that we actually interview the officers and find out specifically, you know, what they do in the case of an emergency. Very basic information when you're evaluating the safety of something like a police station.
Thank you, you answered the question. Thank you.
Mayor Hamilton?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to be here earlier, but I'm just checking with our chiefs. We don't do traffic studies on fire station locations, we, the emergencies are located in order to, emergency services are located in order to get to where they need to get to in the city, they obviously run their lights, I don't know if a high count or a low count, from your perspective, is better, but our commitment is to provide the emergency services from that location. As the chief said, most dispatches are not from the station, unlike a fire station, a police station, and in my view, that number should actually go down over time, so that we have police officers spending less time in the station and more time in our community. But we don't typically, I don't believe, do traffic studies in the location of public safety locations like this, and...
Then it's hard to compare the two. It's very difficult to compare the purchase with the existing station, if we don't have that data.
I know you're not in favor of this proposal, in any event, so I'm just telling you that whether, I'm sure Third Street is a much higher volume than Rogers Street, but I don't know if that tells you which way or the other, but we don't typically do those counts.
Additional round one questions? Oh, Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Let's start with Chief Decoff, I think, and maybe Chief Moore, but I think it's more Chief Decoff. Am I being heard okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. As a preface to the question, there's been some insinuations that has been made, that frontline sworn officers or FOP members, I mean, it's like... I mean, it's like 100% or a very high percentage say, oh, this is unsafe. And yet I've not seen any document, any survey, any, you know what I'm saying, any data saying that. So I guess my question to Chief DeKoff is I think he's heard the same things that we've heard, particularly from the rank and file. I want to know what is his position on that, and has there been that discussion between BPD leadership and rank and file officers with regard to egress and ingress safety?
We've had conversations about the egress and ingress, and it is a concern. But we've also had discussions with Deb Kuntz, design people, that said that these things can be resolved. And so I'm not sure that I see it much differently than the current parking lot that we have with the pedestrian traffic that goes through that parking lot, a sidewalk that goes through the middle of it. And so I'm confident that we can work with design people to come up with solutions that will make that area safer.
Okay, thank you. And I think you might be able to help inform this question as well. Years ago, when I sat on the Board of Public Safety, I do believe we came up with the divisions on how officers are assigned throughout the city. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought one perimeter kind of circled downtown, and then the rest of the city was divided in quadrants. Is that still the case?
Yeah, we still have a downtown area, and we have the districts that go around, yes.
Okay, and I think earlier you said you estimated maybe 20 to 30% of calls from officer responding calls originate at City Hall currently? Or did I miss here?
No, they don't originate at City Hall. The question was, how many officers are dispatched from the police department? And so, and again, you know, it could be on a given day that, you know, none are dispatched from there. It could be on a given day that a bunch. It just depends upon what's going on, you know, during the day and during their shifts as to, you know, what might bring an officer to the department to either do paperwork, to, you know, get supplies, do whatever. And so, you know, as the mayor stated, most of the calls are dispatched while they're on patrol because that's what they're out doing.
Okay, and I think that's what I was getting at, just to emphasize that again. Those of us that have served in those capacities and actually know those things, it would be the same as response time for some of our firefighters and our fire engines in order to help determine some things. Thank you, chief. I may have questions, necessarily specifically for you, but I may have more questions later. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional first round questions? If not, I'll take a run. That is Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. I was going to ask Chief DeKoff about crashes with police cars. So do we have data there on, you know, the last five years? How many crashes there have been with someone driving a police car, with pedestrians, people riding bikes, or with other cars?
I don't have that information at my fingertips, no. I can get that for you. But I don't know what the number is off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from round one? If not, I'll jump in.
I'm like several of my colleagues in that I'm trying to make sense of this ingress egress issue. And what I'm hearing is, things can be resolved. There's a way to, it would really help me to hear more about what specific kinds of solutions have been discussed. Because right now I'm hearing, oh, that could, we can deal with that, we can manage ingress egress. In the absence of a traffic study, is there anyone who could share anything about what specific options have been discussed?
You know, I think we have talked about this with Deb Kuntz. I'm going to call on her again. But I would say that, you know, just looking at where there might be a narrower lane, that it might make more sense to widen a lane a little bit in order to make it a smoother drive, that sort of thing. Looking at, gosh, just things you would look at to make it easy to get around. Deb, do you want to speak to this? I'm clearly failing.
Of course, I'd be happy to. So yes, so obviously we have had what we consider the two main ingress and egress from the site, both the north and the south. And as we think about, you know, if there, so the scenario that was cited for me was, what happens if those get blocked, right? What happens if somebody is protesting? Or maybe the market, right, on Saturday has overflowed? And, you know, those kind of areas are blocked. So let's just take the worst-case scenario that we hope never happens is, you know, people are rioting or things are covering that. There are really, there are two other ways out of that area if you don't take the north or south entry. One is, you can, there is an exit point that you can go directly and drive directly on the B-line. Now, is that something we'd recommend every day? Of course not. But in an emergency, if areas were blocked, that is an emergency egress out. Additionally, I would add that the parking, through the parking garage is actually another way out of that area. And that you can absolutely go through the parking garage to get out into that, over to, I guess it'd be Rogers. And so those are, you know, other alternate ways if the two primary pathways are, you know, blocked in some way.
Any other comments? Chief DeKoff?
So some of the other things we talked about is, is this working? Is notification on the B-line, putting some kind of flashing lights if cars go through. But also keep in mind that police cars have lights and sirens. And so whenever they're going on an emergency run, they can activate those to let people know. Now, is that going to be ideal in a denser setting? People will get complaints, but again, safety is the first part of that, and we're going to use those when we need to use those.
Thank you. May I follow up? Well, let's just go. Can I speak to that? Go ahead. I hate to contradict the chief in any way, but I would say, in the last few days, I've spoken with people who live and work near the current police station. I've spoken to people at The Rise, Middleway House, Goldcasters, Project School. And they haven't experienced a noise issue. They say, we don't even hear the sirens. They do acknowledge that there are occasionally cars that have to go fast, but they feel like the police are very respectful and careful. And so no one expressed a deep concern at all. Thank you. Let's go to round two questions. Councilmember Volan?
Just to follow up on this thread, isn't there also a possibility of gates coming up out of the ground to block certain entry points? Is that a thing? You know?
There are a lot of options along those lines as far as traffic control and pedestrian control and that sort of thing. So I think that, speaking to Councilmember Rallo's traffic study, I think we would want to do a traffic study. And I think that the results of those studies then inform the best choice of method of limiting traffic.
You do see, though, now why the 25,000-foot level might not have been enough for us because a traffic study is the kind of thing that comes at the 20,000-foot level too. And we're not able to do that unless we approve this first. So I can see why he's dismayed. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know about your desire for a traffic study sooner.
No, I was agnostic about it. I'm just saying that this is one of many decisions that is, like, for us, I think it would, well, I'm commenting now. I can save it for later.
I would say, though, that the city of Bloomington on a regular basis deals with how to keep pedestrians safe. We do it on South Walnut. We do it on Lincoln. We do it on Washington. I mean, you can name many, many spots where we've already taken that on as a, something that needs to be taken care of and managed it. That's, we have a planning and transportation department. They specialize in that sort of thing. So it's not a foreign concept.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty, and then Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. Going to continue on the same thread a bit with a question for Chief Moore, or a few questions. We've covered this a little bit in past meetings, but could you refresh for us the experience of BFD at the temporary location at Fourth Street, which is, to remind colleagues, members of the public, immediately adjacent to the B-line at Fourth Street?
Yes, thank you for the question. So we are right on the B-line. Our temporary headquarters, in fact, had to move some of the traffic signs, the yield signs in the middle of the traffic, had to move them from one side of the station away so we could make our turn. But anywhere between, and again, on average, five to 15 times a day, do we respond from that station across the B-line with zero incidence of having an issue. So same thing with the police. We have police and, we have lights and sirens. We do have a little bit of a benefit of more people on an apparatus. So like, especially when we back into that station, having spotters. But we do not have any issues getting out of that station.
So in your experience, 100% of the time pedestrians, bicyclists using the B-line have understood what the sirens meant and stopped and waited for the emergency services to proceed? Is that right?
I'd never say 100%, ever. But we, again, train our officers and our firefighters just the same. The lights and sirens are a request to yield. They are not a demand to yield. So we would yield to them if they didn't hear. But again, we've also incorporated a lot of technology so that we can alert people even with noise-canceling headphones and everything else. So I would say, a vast majority of the time, we do not have any issues with them yielding us. But if so, they're generally quickly across and we go right through.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenberg.
My question is also for Chief Moore. I was just going to ask you. I think that tonight so far, we've heard a lot about the reasons for the police to relocate to Showers, but could you just refresh us on the reasons you think it makes sense for fire to relocate to Showers?
Yes, thank you for the question. And I think, again, I just need to start kind of with the history. Prior to the temporary headquarters, my administration staff were spread out all over the city. So at the loss of what is now the Lotus Building, we had to take away space from an operational crew to put a prevention team, so they were on the west side. There is the two main chiefs and an admin assistant at the downtown location. We've now added community care coordinators and other staff. So what I will say is, we do a lot more than just emergency response in my department. We actually work very close with planning, engineering, the county building department, even HAND and CFRD. Beyond that, the internal services of HR, controller. So from an administrative standpoint, we spend a lot of time here in City Hall. From the customers we serve, they spend time going from place to place trying to get things done, which it's already fairly difficult to get things built in Bloomington. But now we would consider putting them all co-located, one single stop for someone when they want to get a plan reviewed, plus the fire portion of that plan review done, if they've got questions, anything like that. So from our perspective, there is a greater sense of continuity for the work we do to support the rest of our operational firefighters. From a citizen standpoint, it would ease some of their issues when they are trying to go through the process of building, and even records requests. They have to go through the legal department before they come see us. Well, normally they show up at my headquarters and we tell them, you've got to go to the legal department first. This would be right across the hall, essentially, which would make it easier. So from our standpoint, this is a great thing for our administration and how we could better function within the city and serve our firefighters and citizens.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yes, this question is for the administration, so for Ms. Carmichael. If we vote down this amendment and proceed with the purchase of showers for public safety use, how will you engage the employees of the fire department and especially of the police department in planning out the renovation and use of that space?
Yeah, we definitely, and thank you for the question. I'm glad you asked that. Yes, we very much want to include them in the planning process, both the sworn officers and the other. They're like, there are around 38 non-sworn office, well, non-sworn workers that work in the Bloomington Police Department. So we'd like to get their perspective on things, on the design of that, too. They actually probably spend more hours of the day in the building than the sworn officers who are out patrolling. So and of course, Chief Moore, as you can tell, has been very engaged in this process so far. So we would definitely include them in any of the planning before build-out.
Thank you, and I have a sort of related question. So there's been concern expressed by some police officers about the many windows in the Showers building. And this may be a question for Ms. Kuntz, I'm not sure. But how can we ensure the safety of our police officers, sworn and non-sworn, in a building where there are so many windows?
You know, there's, I don't think there's any prohibition. If there were certain windows that were particularly a concern, those could be blocked up. It's a historic building, so we'd have to probably do it from the inside and, you know, maintain the exterior. But I think that there are options along those lines. I'm sensitive to that, too. I want people to not only feel safe, but to be safe. And I could see how in certain, if there were certain particularly vulnerable areas, perhaps a deployment of ballistic glass would make sense. I don't think that's necessarily something that's necessary throughout that whole facility, but I could see if there was a particularly vulnerable area, that might be one option. I think the important word to remember here is options. There are many, and we just, it's like everything else that we consider and talk about. We have to make choices.
All right, thank you.
Point of order. Could we have that question directed to Ms. Kuntz?
Yes, actually, that's a great idea. Ms. Kuntz, can you speak to the issue of safety and windows?
Of course, yeah. I would just build on the options. I mean, Deputy Mayor Carmichael mentioned two of them. You know, ballistic glass is one we've had a lot of conversations about before. That is always an option, albeit probably not required for everyone. There are also shades that actually allow natural light to come through, but it keeps you from actually looking into the office. So there are other solutions that may be worth exploring as well. Options, I think, is the key.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I wanted to follow up, Ms. Kuntz, on the idea of cutting through a parking garage. I thought, my understanding was that parking garage was going to be made secure since the police were going to be utilizing it. Is that not the case? So how could it be an additional ingress egress route?
So if you go in the south entry of the garage, you go left and go down. That is the area that we talked about being a secure area. It's got 50 spaces, I think, down there. And that is the secure part of it that we've been talking about. To actually go through the garage, so that is the secured area. If we were to actually travel through it, you would actually kind of stay to the right. You can go right up that ramp and out.
Okay, and wouldn't there potentially be obstructions of cars pulling in and out and so forth in the garage? That could provide an obstacle for the police? I mean, people go in the park, so I would assume that...
I think, I would see that as not any different than if you were traveling through an existing parking lot. So, right, just like if you were in the Showers parking lot, there could be cars pulling out. If you were in the police lot, cars could be pulling out. The same situation could happen in the parking garage, so those situations are similar.
And I wanted to follow up, too. You mentioned an emergency option of a different, another ingress or egress through, across the B-line. Could you elaborate on that?
Of course. It is to get onto the B-line and to drive onto the B-line to get to the major road. I'm not suggesting that you actually go over the B-line to another person's property. The B-line is wide enough for a car. And in an emergency situation, if there were no other routes, that, I do believe, after conversations with the chief, that that is the route that would be taken.
I have one more that's relevant to a previous. Chief DeKoff, you were talking, I think the discussion was, okay, I remember now, it was comparing the crossing of the B-line by a fire truck compared to squad cars. Fire engines are much larger, obviously. They're much more visible. They're painted red. They move slower. It seems to me squad cars go real fast when they leave. Is that correct? Much faster than a fire engine?
Yeah, I would assume that the police cars would leave faster than a fire truck.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Additional round two questions? If not...
Additional round-two questions? If not, I'll ask some, seeing none. Ms. Carmichael, please.
My understanding, as I shared in last week's discussion, I've been in conversation with the members of the near west side neighborhood who have deep concerns about being located, not about being located near police, per se, not in having police nearby, but in the traffic patterns that may result from that. So, I understand that you've had Housing and Neighborhood Development do some outreach. Could you comment on the results of those conversations?
Yes, they were concerned. They had several concerns. But I would say that those are, that's why I reached out to the folks who are actually in proximity to the current police station, because I think as human beings, we can kind of worry about the unknown and start thinking of all the possibilities that could, you know, bad things that could happen. So, that's why I reached out to the folks I mentioned earlier to find out, okay, what was their actual experience? And as I reported before, those fears were not founded based on the people who are actually living in proximity, living and working in proximity to the current police station.
But what did you hear from near west side neighbors?
Various concerns about noise and traffic.
Okay. This is another question, not, I'm not even sure who to direct this to, perhaps one of the chiefs or both of the chiefs. This is under the heading of "Help Me Feel Better About." Okay. So, last time I said, "Help me feel better about ingress and egress." This is "Help Me Feel Better About Co-location." One of my concerns is co-locating all of our public safety with administration, with the seat of government. So, in the event of some catastrophic event that could disable the showers complex, what is our plan? What is our alternative for setting up some government, a seat of government elsewhere? And as long as we have separate, I know that we have a place on Third Street to go. If we don't have that anymore, what are, what's the thinking about that? And you're all smiling at each other, which makes me wonder, so.
Thank you for the question. I think we're actually just discussing letting him answer for me versus not. But what I want to do is be very plain. We, in emergency services, build continuity of operations plans. They're continuity of operations. So, just like when the flood happened, we lost all ability to run out of that station. Within a few days, we were fully functional again. Within two weeks, we were running out of a temporary. Within six weeks, we were fully functional as a fire station out of a lawyer's office. So, when you talk about what-ifs, that's the world we live in. We live in the what-if world all the time. So, if you were to say, what if something were to happen here to showers? If this is the move we make, we would start building those plans of where is our fallback location? Where is our secondary location? Where could we set up communications? Where could we do all these things? So, with this being a pending plan, we haven't gone through that entire process. But I assure you that if this is the plan, or if another plan's created, those continuity of operation plans would be developed, and we would have a backup should something happen, because we do not and cannot fail.
Thank you. Chief Tikoff?
This could be a first, but he actually probably gave you the same answer that I would give you. I mean, they're telling me the list of places that we currently have. We have a training center that has a large classroom in it that we could use also. We have a little bit of space in the dispatch center that if we needed to, we could use that. And of course, that applies to our current building. Something would happen to our current building, we would have to find other space. And we have different facilities. We also have the switchyard office. We have different facilities that the police department uses for a variety of different reasons that if something would happen, we could divide up our operations into those different buildings.
So, what I'm hearing is, we have options, but we haven't thought through that yet. Is that accurate?
Well, I mean, we have options currently. We have not developed those plans, which they would probably be very similar, because our other locations aren't going to change. But those, if something would happen to showers, if we were located there, we would still utilize those same buildings, those other buildings that we currently have.
Okay, thank you.
If I might add, I think those are all good plans and questions, and we do think about that. Of course, we have a mobile command center, too. We have Indiana University with multiple facilities that were the worst to happen. We would do that. I do, I do want to also just note that what-if most things that happen, we will be dramatically better, in my perspective, if there's an emergency anywhere in the city, to have our police chief, our fire chief, our coordinated response closer together. That gives us, in most circumstances, the ability day-to-day to plan, to respond, to coordinate, and to provide better integrated public safety services. I think, so it's absolutely right, we need to plan for the worst. But I think it's also the coordination of these public safety facilities. And every time I'm with other mayors, the integration of public safety, thinking about it as an umbrella, is critically important, more and more important. The bright lines between sworn police officers and sworn firefighters are melting as we build more capacities to provide public safety. And that kind of day-to-day capacity to respond to emergencies or non-emergencies will be greatly enhanced.
Thank you. Additional questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Rala.
Yeah, to follow up on that, so, say, a disaster hits. Has this building been evaluated in terms of its, what can it withstand in terms of an earthquake? Has that been evaluated?
Ms. Kuntz?
Ms. Kuntz, do you have a?
Yes, as we reported in the ad hoc committee, that the, and I think Larry Allen may or may not be there, but that the testing of the soil and what's underneath this slab has not been completed.
Well, that's irrelevant. I mean, well, I mean, that's un-relevant in the case of an earthquake. But in a natural disaster, say, a tornado, what level tornado can this building withstand?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Because a new building, new police station, or a renovated police station with an addition would be brought up to withstand essentially those types of disasters.
New construction is held to a different standard. There is no question about that.
That's right. And it's hard to evaluate a building where you don't know exactly what sort of natural disaster it could withstand. It's a 110-year-old furniture factory. Makes for a good office building, but maybe not well-suited for a disaster.
Ms. Kate?
Yeah, Corporation Council Beth Kate. In the context of the Spring Point work that they did, they engaged some engineers to take a look at the issues of soil. They commented on wind resistance and so on. I don't have the communications right with me right now. But, and I'm happy to follow up, but I, my recollection from that is that they were not concerned about wind events. That seismically, because of the soil, the standards for soil, it didn't meet Class IV. I think you've already talked about that and heard about that. But from a wind event or a snow event, they were not concerned about the building, so.
Any additional questions before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none. Let's move to public comment. For those who are in chambers, if you would, please begin approaching the podium. And Mr. Lucas, could you extend an invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, and just a question of clarification. This is comment on Amendment 1.
Yes, thank you. This is specifically on Amendment 1.
For members of the public that would like to comment on this Amendment 1 to appropriation ordinance 2206, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay. Just quick count, I see three. Are there others in chambers who would like to make comment? Okay. Oh, all right. Let's do three minutes, please.
Okay, and you're putting the clock up there for me, Steve? Okay. Jeff Richardson, a citizen of Bloomington. In the mid-1970s, when I was in law school, I was on the city council, overlapping for part of the time with my prosecutorial work. And I worked in the prosecutor's office and was a juvenile probation officer. I worked with the police every single day. They were as concerned about people's well-being as were other participants in the justice system, prosecutors, probation, parole officers, judges, not-for-profits, and others. While at the prosecutor's office, I was putting children in jail that had no business being there. I wanted that practice to stop, so I became one of the leaders of a successful effort to create the Monroe County Youth Shelter, the first one ever that opened in November of 1977, with support from the city, county, state, federal, and a space provided by Indiana University. Five entities, all working together collaboratively to keep children out of adult jail. This program, now under the Monroe County Youth Services Bureau, continues to thrive to this day. Several city and county police officers were some of the biggest advocates of creating this youth shelter. In this larger context, I'm concerned that some people may be unwittingly characterizing the police as free agents, acting with little supervision and oversight, and not willing to work with others. With this perceived mindset, it therefore might make some sense to conclude that it's critical to have lying officers move into City Hall so they can be, quote, reined in, or be compelled to work with others in need, or, as one City Hall watcher speculated, so the mayor can keep an eye on them. Having the above perception be one of the inferred rationales for moving lying police into showers would be a terrible misperception of the police's role in the larger collaborative, multi-stakeholder system. Would also be a significant disservice to those officers who are consciously serving now and those who have done so in the past. I think it's imperative for the city to provide comprehensive service to all in need, especially working closely with the county. And here we're talking about safety. There's no county people here talking about that. They're integral to this. I have five quick questions I hope that you can ask. Will the lying police officers actually be safer in showers? Will these officers moving into showers actually result in them doing their jobs differently, better than they do now? Will all the employees of the showers actually be safer by having lying police officers in the building? Will the city overall be safer by having the police in the showers building? If you believe so, how will you know? And lastly, as a member of the council, are you satisfied that the process surrounding this proposal is sound one? Were you treated as true partners in the decision-making process from beginning to end, so much so that you would advocate for this kind of process being replicated by this and future administrations? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have takers on Zoom?
Not at the moment, no.
Thank you. Our next commenter here in chambers?
Good evening again, Eric Oost. And I first want to express appreciation for all of you, as well as other people who are in the audience and online, for choosing to serve our community. I think it's important to listen to the folks who are providing these services. And what I hear is that there is a significant amount of concern regarding this change in facilities. I think there are issues that are coming up, that came up in the subcommittee hearings for the meetings, as well as tonight. And I just ask you to carefully consider your decision this evening in regards to purchase of the showers. That isn't to say that the showers or some other location couldn't be purchased in the future, but at this time, it does not sound like this is the best decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oost. Additional comments here in chambers? Welcome. If you could share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. Paul Post, President FOP, LAJDA8. Ladies and gentlemen, we have spoken with you at length about this proposed purchase and the pitfalls that we see in it. Thank you for the direct attention you have given this topic. It is not something to be rushed into. It's a major financial decision. It's a major logistical decision. It's a major community decision. We've heard from so many in the community expressing doubt and concern at the idea of purchasing the showers building for a police department. Current employees, that we shared, local business owners, even current leases over here have talked to us. This week in the Herald Times, Mary Hamilton had an opportunity to address the real concerns we and others have brought forth concerning the proposed purchase of the building. Instead of offering direct concrete solutions, he chose to paint himself as knowing better the needs of the police, rather than listen to the police employees themselves. The mayor pointed to the supposed benefit of co-locating both arms of your public safety team under the same roof as his office, with the goal of repurposing a historical building. The mayor described this as, quote, "integrated public safety services, strongly tied into city services as a whole," unquote. No one is against the idea of further combining some police and fire operations where we can. But that can be done, and is already happening to some extent, without the risk of co-locating all of your emergency operations and City Hall operations under a 113-year-old roof. That's just one natural disaster away from a tragedy. Integration of select services can happen, no matter the building chosen. Picking a location with the most likely lifespan, then, is just common sense. And repurposing a historical building, it's usually a noble undertaking, yes. But it's not always a good fit for the proposed occupants, especially ones with very specific job needs, Kalia and safety standards to be met, a major change in vehicular traffic patterns in the area, and, don't forget, a brand-new apartment complex coming in just across Eighth Street. The mayor's proposed plan also requires the use of creed funds in addition to the sale of Third Street property. We understand the responsibility of using those funds for what they are intended and did not rely on them in our projections. We sought to make conservative financial estimates with the goal of spending less and staying within the budget you set in the bond process. And who knows what some unknown developer would do, then, with the Third Street property. Tonight, again, we call on you to let common sense and financial responsibility rule the day, reject the overpriced land grab, and work with us to design a financially responsible future that best provides for the employees and the citizens they serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Our next commenter, if you would, share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is still David Sabag, and I still live in the 5th district. I want to address this. I am thrilled that the city is buying more and more private property to take it off the tax rolls so that the rest of us have to pay more property taxes. A great idea for government to buy more and more property. I'm only being facetious. I'll try to be serious now. I was part of city government when we moved over here in 1995. I'm sure that the parking lot out there was built just for that. I was driving downtown. I came up, and Eighth Street, now Eighth Street comes across, and Eighth Street stops at the showers, or the Fernandez Common, now I guess I call it, and then continues as you go past. And why is that? Well, coming in here is traffic calmed. We love to use the phrase "traffic calming." That's what's happening in here. You got the parking lot over there. People walk over here to the building, and you want traffic to be calmed when it comes through. And it's that way now. You want to put police in a traffic-calmed area. Now, that doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense to me. Okay, now, continue on. You have the B-line. Now, I heard that tonight, I don't know, that, well, if somebody's on the B-line, but a police car has to go across, they have to turn the siren on. Well, if you've ever been on a bicycle and you hear a siren right away, the first thing you probably do is fall off the bicycle. You've got to be careful. So, you're going through, you got across the B-line. As everybody says, there's a new apartment building going up. And you're going out, you're going out onto, what, Eighth Street, I guess? Is that right? I'm going out onto Rogers. Well, if you keep going, before you get to Rogers, there's two buildings on the corner of Rogers and Eighth Street. So, the visibility isn't very good. And then you get out, you turn left, and the first thing you have, oh, we have an elementary school. So, it seems to me to put police over here in a landlocked location with calmed traffic is, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And using downtown creed funds for the remodel is not what those funds were used for. And there, oh, there's also comparison made to the Bunker Robertson building. Well, I know the Bunker Robertson building. I was over there for 20 years. And you can get out onto Fourth Street, very active area, not like going through Eighth Street here.
Mr. Sabag, you're at your time. Could you finish up, please?
Okay, yeah. And you got parking lot, you can get out. Very easy to get out. I would suggest that you should look for a new location for the police. Please negotiate. If the administration won't negotiate, it's up to you guys. If the administration won't negotiate, it's up to you guys to negotiate.
Thank you, Mr. Sabag.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we have Jamie.
Welcome, let's go to Zoom now, but welcome, if you would, please share your full name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My full name is Jamie Shoal. I'm going to mention just a few things. I like the current BPD location because I feel safe in that area, especially in that park, because the BPD is there. I think that, well, I don't feel as safe in Bloomington as I used to. And I'm a townie, I've lived other places, always come back, so that kind of bloomering fits me, that terminology. But Bloomington's changed. So I appreciate that. A concern, two concerns, is the location in showers isn't as easily central to travel north, south, or east, west, as it would be. You know, that's something that is a concern, as what was just mentioned. There is an elementary school nearby as well, besides farmers markets and other events that take place around showers. Having, at one time, in earlier days, living in San Francisco and also Seattle, in San Francisco, I experienced a major earthquake. I've seen masonry buildings tumble. And I have not seen any indication, and maybe I overlooked it, of not just the standards of getting this building up to speed for these uses, these new uses, but is it retrofitted? I know San Francisco, after the Loma Crata, required all buildings to be retrofitted within a certain amount of time. We do have, too, not just the New Madrid fault, but we have a Wabash Valley seismic zone as well. The likelihood of an earthquake being as large as what I'd experienced in San Francisco is not as great. However, the likelihood of having a five is not out of the question. And would that building hold up when we have both fire and police in the same building? And every, all of these communications and everyone that we would need to respond to this in a location that may not be nearly as central and easily accessible to the areas of the city that need to be accessed? Anyway, having gone through that, that does color my view quite a lot on if the building, if showers building would be acceptable. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Shoal. Welcome here in chambers, if you would, share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. Jeff Rogers, representative of the FOP and members of the Bloomington PD. Like Mr. Post stated, we have expressed our concerns numerous times about why the showers building is not the best option to be our next police department. We're not opposed to being in the same building as the fire administration in City Hall, but we are opposed to the location of the building and the structure itself. The showers building is over 110 years old. It's in a confined area with no immediate access to major roadways. It is also not a category four building that is capable of withstanding a natural disaster such as a major earthquake or a major tornado. As long as City Hall is located in this building, there shouldn't be a public safety headquarters located with it. Now, if the building was a category four building and in a location with access to major roadways, we would not be having this conversation. In looking at the past five years, the police department asked for a raise at one time, so the mayor had a salary study conducted. Police department also asked for more manpower, so the mayor had a staffing study conducted. When it was determined that the police needed a new headquarters, why wasn't a study done to determine the best location? Normally, a study is conducted in conjunction with the police department to determine the needs of the future department. They then look at how much it's going to cost and then look at possible locations. The best location is then chosen after all of this. This entire process has been the cart before the horse. The mayor wants the showers building and figured out he could buy it with public safety funding. It was never determined to be the best location, and there wasn't due diligence done on this site or other sites prior to bringing the initial proposal to the city council. It was only after this council asked about other options that the Plan B and Plan C were both put forth, both of which had such inflated costs that the hope would be to just go with the cheaper option, the showers building. According to the architect, a new building would cost $500 per square foot, but the actual completed cost would be $814 per square foot if we own the property and $900 per square foot if we don't own the property. Just in the newspaper yesterday, it states the new Monroe County Library will be $12.5 million for 21,000 square feet, or $595 a square foot for the completed project. While the library isn't a police department, please explain why every square foot would be $200 to $300 more expensive. You, the council, are voting on spending $23.5 million for the future of the police department. What are you getting for your money? In 25 years, if you build new, you have a 25-year-old building built to modern standards. If you renovate and expand the existing BPD, you have half a building that's 90 years old and half that is 25 years old and built to modern standards. If you purchase the showers building, you will have a 135-year-old building that is an office building, does not meet modern standards of a police department. How long do you really believe the showers building is going to last? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Additional public comment, either in chambers or on Zoom?
Yes, next on Zoom, we have Joan Midendorf.
Ms. Midendorf, welcome. I'm trying to make my camera work. I hope it will. Okay, good. Can you see me?
No, but we can hear you, and we'll take your comments that way.
Okay. The part that excites me about having the police move to showers is that there's a need in our country for police reform. And, you know, we've had years, you know, generations of black and brown people being treated in harmful ways by police, by policing. And I live in the near West Side neighborhood, I've seen it in my neighborhood. And what do you mean, I've seen it in my neighborhood? I had to stand out on my front steps and beg the police not to shoot a neighbor, where they were holding guns on a neighbor, and I had to beg them to please talk to the neighbor. And I begged the neighbor to run home, "Don't shoot the neighbor." And another time, there was a young woman who got pulled over by the police because her taillight was out, a young black woman, and then they decided her registration wasn't correct, and though she had two kids in her backyard, they had her car towed away, and there she was, left on a dark evening with no ride home, so I gave her a ride home. These are things that I really think policing could be doing better. And so when we try to think about how to reform policing, integrated public safety is one of the things that is the way to go. So this is what I think, you know, some cities are having to pay $2 million and $5 million when something terrible happens from the police shooting somebody. We haven't had that happen for a long time. We have had a police officer shoot and kill a black person in this city, but it hasn't been for a long time, but we don't want to have that happen. It'd be better to spend our money now so we don't have that happen. And when police officers will be in the building with other city workers, and they'll get to hang out with them, and culturally, they'll get to know each other more and know the values of what the city is trying to do more, I think that would be better for everybody in this city. So that's what excites me about integrated public safety. A few people in my neighborhood are raising concerns, like, oh, the police will be zooming down our streets. But when I was on our neighborhood board 10 years ago, we had an officer assigned to us that was like a liaison for our neighborhood, and we were able to ask her when there were times where we felt like there were too many police zooming through our neighborhood, and she was able to talk to the police, so we had a liaison, and that worked really well. I forget, her name was April or something like that, and that worked really well, and we felt very satisfied with that. And I think that could assuage the fears of people in our neighborhood. But otherwise, I think there's something really good thinking forward in Bloomington of what could be in this, for both the police to have more satisfying jobs, where it's not just about, you know, policing, about arresting people, but policing-
Ms. Midendorf, you're at your time, could you please finish up?
Yeah. Anyway, that's just, I think there's some really good things that can happen in the culture of our city if we make this move. So, thank you very much for listening. I'm Joan Midendorf. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Additional comments here in chambers or on Zoom? Seeing none, let's come back to council then for additional questions. Councilmember Volan.
So, we've talked quite a bit about the benefits of unifying these departments in City Hall, but I'm looking at the schema that was provided to us by the administration, the first and second floor. And one thing I don't see is where the connections between the police department and the rest of City Hall would go. I mean, it seems to me that police, the police department, needs to be secure in some places. Maybe it doesn't have to be so secure in others, but can somebody talk to that point? In other words, where are we going to see the benefits of, say, police department officials, both line officers and records officials and the like, are walking through the hallway right outside chambers or otherwise interacting with the rest of the city? Can someone speak to that? Where will that happen?
I can speak to that. Deb Koots, G S Hill. I'm also trying to pull up a document, and it may be easier to show you, so if you-
That'll be great, yeah. I mean, I have the CFC showers renovation, first and second floor illustrations here, and I'm just looking at them, not seeing the connections.
Yes, so if you, if you look at the first floor, let me see if I can share.
I mean, I could have put a door right through here, you know? Say hello.
Do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I think this is the drawing that you have-
That's what I'm looking at, yes, that's the first floor.
Yeah. So, do you see this black line right here?
Yes.
Right there? See where it says "new corridor"? That's the connection point.
Okay, I don't see the words "new corridor," I just see the black line, but I take-
It's really small down there, so-
Yes, I see it now.
That black line is where it is.
Okay.
And then if we look at the second floor, it's in the same place.
Okay, so that's a new corridor, and that's down by, yeah, I know where that is, here in City Hall, so-
Yeah, because we need to get them connected into the corridor, right? So we got to get the corridor of the City Hall and the corridor of the other side of showers to connect in, so that's where that pathway needs to be.
So can I just loop on into that corridor as a city council member? I mean, will my badge get me into some portion of the police department?
Yeah, that area is, in this case, that if, from the City Hall side, that is behind the card access location, so, you know, so that, you know, that's already behind that location, so that's how you would get in there, so.
Okay, so in other words, I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, what is the protocol going to be for non-police employees entering the police department? Will it be just like any other department, where a card can get you in?
Well, right now, the police department is on the other side of that corridor, and if you look closely, you can see that there is no direct connection point on the first floor to this side of the police department. Now, if they ever expand, then those kind of conversations would absolutely have to be held. There is connection on the second floor, and you'll see there's a reference here to card access. So we believe that the most important thing on the second floor is that we'd still have that existing corridor, but there would be a card access location here for access.
I see the mayor is here with a response. Well, I mean, I don't, it's for either of you, so I mean, look, I'm familiar with the whole of this building. I had office space in Showers Plaza not long after they opened, not long after City Hall moved here. And one thing I remember, and one thing that I see every time I come to City Hall, is they were designed to be two separate buildings, even though they're a single structure, and, like, it's a kind of a hall to walk around. Like, what I'm seeing here is that I think it's sort of unlikely to see that much interaction between police and non-police, so I'm curious how you think about it.
Thank you. I appreciate the question and the sentiment, and I first, partly in response to some of the comments, I just want to make clear, I personally, and this administration, is incredibly proud of our public safety departments. We have among the best in the state, if not the best. We are very, very proud of their service, their progressivity, their professionalism, and I think that reflects a tradition of evolution and change and focusing on how do we deliver the best public safety to our people. I've sworn in a lot of police officers over the last seven years, dozens. Every time I swear in a police officer, I talk ahead, and I talk about how the more you know as a new police officer about our community, the better. And the more our community knows about you as a police department and a police officer, the better. We are proud of how we act and how we behave, and the integration of those services with our community is important. Now, that's a specific question about how's this going to work in terms of integration is a great one. I think it's multi-level. I know the police social workers are excited about being co-located with the health specialists of the fire department. Those who are dealing in a lot of ways with long-term issues of our public safety are excited about being able, on a daily matter, to be, daily way, to be right next to each other. Similarly, our community service specialists, the fire, as they expand into more behavioral health, that kind of integration at the police and fire level will be very helpful day-to-day, not to mention our administrators, our leadership, as they think about public safety. I do think also, within the building, and security is going to be paramount, and a police department is more secure than a planning department, and that's going to be the case. But even within the building, there will be movement back and forth of different people, sharing space, going to meetings, going to restrooms, going to water coolers, as it were. And then I don't think I want you not to discount, how many of you spend much time around the police department, seeing officers come in and out on their lunch break? How many of us do that? It's a very isolated place. I do think the value of having our frontline police officers and fire administrators and other non-sworn officers, non-sworn personnel, just be in the milieu of City Hall will cause interactions among all of us, and among the staff, and among the public in general ways, more than it happens now. And that's a good thing. The police are part of our community, and our community is part of our police, same with the fire department. So it's a great question, and I think we'll learn as we go how much that happens, but I think it'll be a lot. And the last thing I just want to note on the issue of concentration of forces, which we pay attention to, of course, but just to note, we probably have about 280 personnel between police and fire right now. At any given time, there will not be more than about 60 of them in this building, maximum. So if disaster were to strike, the vast majority of who, and all of us are wiped out, mayor, council, whoever's in this building, we still have the vast majority of our service providers available. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo, then Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Mary Hamilton, I was going to follow up, because I'm proud of our police force, too, that's why I listen to them. I wanted to know, when you became aware that they were unanimously opposed to moving in the showers in this process?
I'm not aware that they're, I mean, I've heard representation from the FOP leadership that they're against it, as they've indicated. I've not seen any data, but they have indicated that. I don't remember when I first heard that, Councilmember Rallo. It's been a little while, but a couple, few months, I suppose, but I haven't seen any data.
Fairly early in the process, you, they-
Well, we, of course-
They've been telling me for some time that they've been opposed, so they-
Well, I was, early in the process, and I want to be clear, we had an extensive study process done that looked at about dozens of locations, potentially, for a facility. So we have been doing that study, and in the last several months, as the showers option became the optimal option, I learned- became the optimal option, I learned that the FOP had concerns about it. They then made clear they were against it and have, have been indicating that since then. We've, and I've met with them several times. We've talked about all these issues. We certainly look forward to working with them very closely, either with the showers building, which we very much hope will happen, or on the remodel of the existing building as it is, if that's the direction we have to go.
Just one more follow-up. Perhaps we can find a point of agreement. This decision is a big decision. It's, it's a large, it's a huge decision. This is likely to be the police station for the coming decades, for many decades to come. Do you agree?
I believe that the decisions we are making with our public safety investments are significant decisions, important ones, to be taken seriously, and they likely will implicate service for decades, yes.
Okay, so this police station, this decision we're making is going to extend into the decades to come. This is a huge purchase.
It absolutely is a significant purchase? I'm sorry.
Yes.
And, and we'll, and I will note, as you well know, this facility will allow us to expand for, for decades, as opposed to any of the other options we looked at realistically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. This, I have two. The first one for the administration. I'm not advocating for any kind of extension on this, and that's, that's what the question is. What do you think the timeline is with CFC? I know we have end of the month deadline, but I guess, do you have any indication from your talks with them about what happens if we don't buy the other side of showers? Yes, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenberg. Mary Catherine Carmichael, deputy mayor. I have had a conversation with representatives from CFC as recently as today. You may or may not be aware, they're liquidating much of their property here in Bloomington. They're endeavoring to build workforce housing elsewhere with the proceeds from the properties that they're selling. This is the last remaining property among those that they have been charged with selling, so I think that, I will, I don't think that, I was told that, there's a, a great deal of pressure being put on those folks responsible for selling to go ahead and sell this building. So, I think that this is likely kind of a once-in-a-lifetime chance, once-in-a-generation chance to buy that space. If it is something that we want to do, I think they're going to try to move that.
Thank you. Can I follow up on that? Kind of, it's about the building still. Okay, we aren't talking about how old this building is, and it is very old. I'd also say, you know, like, I live at a historic home. It's 100 and almost 30 years old. I renovated the inside, so, I mean, what, I guess what has happened here, obviously, this is new, but I guess, you know, like, what is newer compared to, like, the outside? I mean, the bricks are old, but is that the only thing that's old?
Right, so, you know, when you talk about old buildings, you talk about bones, and, you know, a lot of the bones of this building are very clearly visible as you walk through, and they're good bones, but I would say even more than that, as you'll recall, these, well, both sides of this building, in fact, the whole facility, was basically gutted in the, in the mid-'90s, mid to early, early to mid-'90s, and then it was put back together. So, the mechanical and functional portions of the building are more in the 25-year-old range than the 100-year-old range, and I would just, again, reiterate, having toured the CFC property, it is very well done, very high-quality materials used throughout, many recent upgrades, roof, tuck pointing, that sort of thing. They did a very nice job of keeping things painted and up to date and just, you know, as nice as it can be. So, yes, the, the, the bones are old, but the functional things are, are not old and well-maintained.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, back to CFC and their eagerness to perhaps liquidate this property. Are there other people, are you, that you're aware of that are interested in buying the, the western half of showers, other than the city of Bloomington?
They didn't tell me, they, I didn't even ask that question.
But again, they're eager, they want to, they want to move quickly and get this sold, which begs the question of, are we sure that we're still at the set price that we have?
I did ask that question, and they have come off the price, $500,000. I did ask if we, if they would be willing to come off the price anymore, and they were not.
So, this is last and best and final here. Okay, and a question I have, too, about, are there any interested people communicating with the city about an interest in purchasing? I think you've made it clear that the building is no longer, it's a failing facility. Is somebody interested in buying the Third Street property for the land? Anybody we know of?
It's not on the market yet, so I wouldn't know that.
There have been no conversations with anybody that's eager to develop there?
No.
Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Is that a yes? Oh. Seeing none, are we ready for the question on Amendment 1? No, we're in comments. I'm sorry, my fault. Let's go to final comment, then. This is on Amendment 1 to Appropriation Ordinance 2206. Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, well, it's on Amendment 1, but that's the, that's really the focus of, of course, the debate about this, the showers purchase. First, I want to say the process, I think, has been disappointing. The initial expectation of the council to approve and purchase this back half of the showers in a very brief period of time concurrent with bond approval. I, I won't say it's atypical of the administration, but that it, it was very unsatisfactory. Fortunately, the process was extended, and I thank my council colleagues for that. I appreciate the, the administration agreeing to separate the bond approval from the deliberation on the app board. It was enlightening to serve on the ad hoc committee. I think that Councilmember Volan did an excellent job of cheering that and, and drilling down on various topics. What was most striking to me, there's a lot to say about it, but what was most striking to me is the tendency, it seemed to me, to inflate the cost of the Third Street station renovation and the discounting of expenses at showers. After, after I toured the police station and understood, and there are suggestions for renovation needs, it seemed entirely conceivable to me that it was much less than the estimate of the, of the, of the administration or their architect. It, I don't know if it was about $600,000, but it, it's probably in that neighborhood, 600 to 1,000 to $1 million, and that includes preventing future flooding by putting in a perimeter drain. And that 600,000 is, is about 1/10 of the estimate that was given to us. It doesn't seem realistic to me. That estimate doesn't seem realistic. Meanwhile, the Castle Booze analysis, which was the gold, is the gold standard, I mean, it seems to me that the currency of the realm when it comes to determining renovation of old buildings for public safety, came out in an estimate of $24 million, but that didn't include the purchase of the, of the building at 8.5 million. I didn't realize that at first, but then I, and when I did, it was kind of revelatory, because then I realized that coincidentally, the cost became equivalent. That is, the cost of, of the Third Street renovation and the addition became equivalent to the purchase of, of the backside of the showers. I don't think they are equivalent, but that's what I was, that's what I was given, that was what I led to believe. I think it's a much cheaper option to stay on Third Street. So, there's, the cost differential, and I think it's important. I really don't know if we're going to exceed the cost moving over there with the needs of the police. I'm worried about the danger of co-locating police, Fire, and civil city, especially within a vulnerable 110-year-old building. Unlike any office building, you know, this is the Police Department, Fire, and we need them in, in the event of a response, and we need for disaster, and this building doesn't seem up to the task. It can't be brought up to Level 4, which is the, the standard that is required by law. So, Level 4 standards can be achieved if we build a new building, or it could be achieved by renovating the Third Street building, not bringing that up to Level 4, but maybe close. I mean, it's a, it's a solid building, as far as I can tell, made of concrete and steel as opposed to brick, mortar, and some, and wood beams. And we could have the addition, we brought up to Level 4. In the event of a disaster, you'd have the decapitation of the entire civil city and the, and the police and Fire, and I, I don't think that's trivial. Yeah, maybe we'd be able to patch something together, but you can have emergencies all over the city. We don't have time to, I think, tarry in that emergency. So, kind of hand-waving and saying, "We've got a plan, don't worry," isn't satisfying to me. If you had a plan, then show it to me, and show me exactly what you're going to be doing. I don't think this is a trivial matter, because it's, it's public safety. So, it's a 110-year-old building, former furniture factory, it's well-suited for office. I like the building. I understand the motivation of the administration to acquire it, but it's not suited for the Police Department. Because the most important aspect of this, to me, is that no police officer wishes to move here. They're primarily concerned about their own safety, and they're primarily concerned about their ability to fulfill their duties. Yes, and I listen to them. I think, how can we presume to know more than they do? This is what they do. So, yes, I'm listening to them, and if it were half and half, or even 20%, I'd be listening pretty hard, but when it's unanimous that they don't want to move because of the ingress egress, because of the vulnerability of the building, because of the fact that it can't withstand disasters and the like, I listen. We know the consequence of this, this decision is going to last. It's going to last for decades. So, whatever we do tonight, this is going to be our destiny going forward with public safety into the future. I find that there is some driver to purchase the back half of the showers, and I said I got that. I understand why the administration would want to, but I don't believe that public safety funds utilizing those, shoehorning the police into the old building to make this deal happen, is in the interest of the community. And I have to say, I rarely feel such alarm as I have, as I do tonight. I've been on this council for 20 years, and I've, I rarely feel that we're at the stage of making a very bad decision to do harm for the community. David Sabag was here earlier, and, and I served with him for a while, and an adage that David Sabag constantly referred to was "do no harm." And that's good advice, and he stood at the podium this, this evening and said very succinctly why it's impractical. We have a traffic calming, Showers Plaza with farmer's market and events, and a beeline trail, and a new development, all converging, and very little opportunity for the police to come and go, when they got to leave at high speed, and they got to get somewhere fast. I spoke to a young officer when I did the tour of the department, and she said, "You know what? I've got seconds to get to an emergency. I don't have time to waste. That person, I've got to give them an arc on shot. I got to, I got to save their life. So, if you slow me down by 30 seconds, that person could be dead." So, that's, she's doing her duty, she's doing her due diligence, she's just not thinking just about herself, she's thinking about her role as a police officer and what she needs to do to fulfill that role. So, I, I listened pretty hard to that. I also listened to Eric Spunamore, who's the president of Chamber of Commerce, and he's, he's lamenting the crime in the community. We have a police force that has been crippled in the, in the years past because of the inattentiveness for its needs. It should be at 105 officers, we are at 80 or so right now. Attrition has been problematic, difficulty in retaining officers, difficulty in recruiting. They're overworked, they have to do multiple shifts, and so they, they're, they're stressed. They're in a, they're not in a good place, and I want to make sure they're in a good place, and they're telling us that's not a good place. So, yeah, there's been a lack of due diligence, failure of consulting the rank and fellow officers as to their needs and paying attention to what they have to say. No traffic study, where their primary concern is ingress egress, and nobody has a quantitative study to tell me what the differential is between that building over there on Third Street and this one here. Does anybody see a problem with that? I'm supposed to commit to a $23 million purchase for this thing, and I, I want to do what's best for the community, and I'm, I'm extremely worried. So, I would just appeal to my colleagues, "Do no harm," as David Sabag said. Police want to stay put, they want a renovated building, they want an expansion, or they want a new building, and I think that they're right. So, I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I'm going to follow up directly on my colleague's parting thought of this idea of "do no harm," because it's, it's often invoked to preserve the status quo. We've heard it many times in the context of housing, transportation decisions, many things, as if the status quo cannot possibly cause harm, that there, that the, the way things are is always the way they should be. And I reference that because I, I don't feel that way. I actually have a different view, which is that the nature of both policing and public safety is and should be changing and evolving. At a high level, I think that's what this entire conversation is about. So, I think that is positive cultural change, and the integration of public safety services across Police, Fire, and Civil City services is a crucial change, and that making progress on persistent and difficult systemic problems in our public safety system depends on it. I don't name these problems as an indictment of anyone or any department, but simply as an acknowledgement that Bloomington, like everywhere in the U.S., has issues and a need to continually improve public safety outcomes, to ensure they're not impacting marginalized communities desperately, to reduce our unjust and world-leading incarceration rates. We have local data on these things, and it's not great. All of this to say, we do need to be mindful of evolutions, changes, best practices among progressive communities who are working to address these thorny, difficult systemic issues, and that's what I see as the real value of integration and co-location of all the whole range of public safety services, which, again, are evolving and will continue to change and evolve. So, I think we're doing harm by preserving the status quo. That, to me, would be doing harm. I'm trying to avoid harm, so I reject that framework, that the status quo does no harm. A lot of discussion from my colleagues has focused on the alternative to showers of renovating and expanding the Third Street headquarters. That was the, the primary focus of, of the ad hoc committee, but we know that is not actually a real option here. Based on extensive analysis from experts whose profession this is, the administration concluded that it would be a fiscally irresponsible decision and use of taxpayer dollars to expand on that site, and they will not pursue that. The narrative that there was an ulterior motive of acquiring showers and that we're shoehorning public safety integration into that purpose, there, there has been literally no evidentiary basis for that. It's a made-up narrative that has been furthered to justify a particular position, but there, it's, it's just made up. With respect to ingress and egress, I know that continues to be an important point of discussion. First of all, I think it's just important to note that the reason police don't, you know, chase fleeing vehicles is because they would create a, a greater risk to people in the area than, than the benefit that serves. Emergency responders always have a duty of safety first, no matter the context. Everywhere in the downtown is a pedestrian-dense area. As we talked about tonight, Bloomington Transit is located at the current, next to the current Police, Police Headquarters, the Transit Center, as is the Boys and Girls Club, a playground for children, a pedestrian path that crosses their parking lot, multiple sidewalks, high pedestrian activity on Third Street, Washington, Lincoln. Those are neighborhood streets that are used extensively by the police. I've heard from residents on those streets over time that they, they do have concerns about the, the speed of police vehicle travel on those streets, which is just to note, even when sirens are not on... uh, even when sirens are not on, it's just to note that, um, we need to continually be working on improving safety with respect to pedestrians, bicyclist, drivers of vehicles in that context, but there's nothing... I'm concerned that, that the current location is actually less safe, uh, overall, for ingress egress than the proposed showers location. Definitely has more children, um, and more pedestrian activity on all sides. I think additionally, we've heard from the Bloomington Fire Department that their experience in operating emergency calls out of a, a place directly next to the beeline has had no problems, that this is, uh, a, a framework that people understand, that when sirens go on, you, you wait, um, and that in any case, uh, their staff are, are adept at identifying risks and, and avoiding them in all contexts of where they're driving. So I don't think that's the issue it's made, been made to be. I, I think it's a little bit more of not examining the status quo, the current situation, from the same framework or lens of analysis with, which we're applying to showers, that extends to the need for a traffic study, or quantitative data, for instance, to justify safe routes, that hasn't been done at the current facility, um, in, in the same way. So, I think, again, for me, what's most dispositive is, is I think this is a positive evolution of culture, of public safety and functioning, just operational functioning of public safety in the city. And, and, um, I think that's to everyone's benefit in Bloomington, and I'll be voting no on the amendment for that purpose and supporting, uh, the appropriation ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Rosenberg? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rosenberg, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have everything totally ready, but no one was raising their hand right away. So for me here, there's no, there is no perfect solution. I think over these weeks and months, we have talked a lot about the pros and cons of this purchase and about renovating the current headquarters, and I just want to say, um, I appreciate everyone who has reached out the last couple of months, who has weighed in here, and I appreciate people who have taken the time to talk to me after I reached out to them, including, um, some retired emergency personnel. It was really wonderful to just hear different perspectives from across the community in this process. So, um, for, what comes up for me a lot here is like, what do I, what do I find the most compelling? And I just use the word compelling, I think, over and over. So I think, I think here there is a lot that is compelling for the move to showers. I know, some of this is just gonna be a little repetitive, but that's where we are. I know the beeline is a big concern for all of us, the comings and goings of police cars. I asked about the beeline at our first meeting on this topic. Chief Decop said, "Most patrol cars, when called, do not originate from headquarters, but respond to emergencies while out on patrol." Chief Moore said, "They have not had any incidents crossing the beeline currently located adjacent to it." I, of course, as most people know, take bike ped safety incredibly seriously, and I find the chief's answers to this very compelling. They are the experts, and I believe what they're saying. I find the room to expand in the future also compelling. This is a city that is expanding every day, and we don't have enough of most services right now to accommodate the humans we have, and that's just going to be the case as long as we keep things exactly as they are. So I think the ability to change with our growing city makes a lot of sense. Also, Chief Moore said renovating the current location is not enough space currently for fire headquarters. So to me already, they've grown out of it. I don't, I don't see how that is an option. Here's something I don't say often, but I find the parking garage compelling. There's been a lot of talk and concern about parking. Right now, the current police headquarters, parking is not secure. We also have a parking garage adjacent to City Hall that we cannot charge market-rate parking because no one really wants to use it. So here we have the chance to upgrade police parking without extra cost by co-locating the police headquarters to showers. I think that's compelling. In one of our letters and in a comment tonight, Ms. Mittendorf in the Near West Side mentions this integrated public safety services, and I know we've talked about it, and I really appreciate the way she frames this, that it is part of moving toward a more just and inclusive community. So for the same reasons, I think co-location is the most compelling piece of this idea, like, from what we know, and wanting to be forward-thinking, and wanting to, I think, do what we say, is that public safety means something different to almost everyone. To many, many people, feeling safe is about having a roof over your head. A lot of departments in the city deal with that, including the hand, including hand. For other people, it's about getting safely from their home to their job on a daily basis. A lot of, a lot of city departments deal with that, engineering, planning, and transportation. So to me, it makes sense to bring in all of our departments under one roof, so people, staff, can more easily work together. I, I find, I mean, I, so that to me is, that to me is the most compelling piece of this, and the most exciting piece, that city staff will get to be together and work, potentially work on projects that were not, maybe not really considered, just by being physically apart. And I think as we transform how we provide services to our residents and what our residents need over time in terms of public safety, I really, I really think the most compelling thing is, is this co-location of all city staff, or most city staff. Okay. I know I'm getting a little ahead of myself here. In the city, if we relocate, and the city might opt to sell this Third Street property, but I also think about what could be done in this space if the city opts to keep this property. This is really me getting ahead of myself. So, um, and Councilmember Flaherty pointed this out too, and I'm, I agree that I think there's probably more bike ped transit activity down on Third Street than there is up here. So, um, let me see where I am, right here. Okay, so that block, Third, Lincoln, Washington, Smith, is the place with very high bike ped transit activity. There are bike lanes on Lincoln and Washington, the Transit Center is across the street. It's an area of downtown where kids can get around by bus, and I think that's really important because, um, the Transit Center is across the block from the Boys and Girls Club, and kiddos actually have to pretty much cross through the police station right now to get from the bus station to, to the Boys and Girls Club. So a lot of those kiddos ride the bus. So here's something, okay, also, the rise is right there, Middle Way House, the Project School, and multiple new multifamily developments are all along Third Street. So something the city doesn't have right now, again, getting ahead of myself, I just want to say that for the last time. Something the city doesn't have in its limits is a soccer field, and one of the cheapest sports in the world to play is soccer. And this space with a park is adjacent to everything that would make an awesome soccer pitch in the city of Bloomington, right? You've got the Boys and Girls Club, who can always use more space for outside play, it's the healthiest thing you can give kids. Other kids can get there by bus. It would be an exciting new thing if we got to move our police and fire up here. One thing that hasn't really been talked about tonight, but it has been brought up multiple times, is the city's farmer's market, and that people think it doesn't really jive if police and fire HQ are located in showers. A lot of people don't really want the farmer's market to exist anymore. This is popular, maybe not popular, but it is an idea of something that we can also think about, right? Maybe it doesn't make sense to have the farmer's market there anymore, or to have a farmer's market at all. We have really awesome markets in the city now with the People's Market, and the Woolery Mill, and other little pop-up markets across town. Okay, so in conclusion, I will be voting no on this amendment.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I keep thinking about what's, you know, our common ground is, we all realize that we need, uh, facilities for the police and the fire department to be, uh, to be renovated, or repaired, or replaced. I think we all agree that's probably a really good thing. That they are together, I think perhaps that's a good idea, too. But the things that pop in my head are, you know, um, there's a lot of different ways to achieve these goals, and we have a, a lot of, uh, smart people in, in the city, and some really dedicated, uh, employees in both departments, and a couple of great chiefs, good administration. I think, um, showers just doesn't seem to be the solution to me. And, uh, so I've looked at it from different ways, and I've tried to listen to everyone, and, and everyone has, you know, had great comments and, and provided great information, so I thank you all for that. So I think it's, uh, you know, this is, uh, kind of talking about the amendment, and so I, I, I'm still gonna vote for the amendment, which takes showers out of the equation. But I don't, you know, I don't think that's such a bad thing, just because, um, there's a lot of different ways to put this puzzle together and to get the needs of, uh, our city and our departments met. So, uh, you know, let's, let's go and think about it in that way. At least that, that's from my perspective, that's what I think. It's, it, the structures together, um, it's a location. It doesn't mean programs, it doesn't mean services. We can do that wherever we are, however we do that. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Sandberg.
The ingress and the egress of the problematic location here is just a small piece of why I think this is not a good investment in the public safety dollars that have been carefully earmarked for police and for fire. While I believe there is a need for, immediate need, to take care of the Station One and other fire department needs, that's why I will be supporting Amendment One, to take showers out of the equation so that we can move in a direction that does have more feasibility to it, feasibility study to it, that does have more opportunity for us to truly talk to the stakeholders here, which has not been done. We have been treating the FOP representatives who have been here faithfully through the ad hoc meetings and these meetings, we treat them like they're members of the public, we give them three minutes each to make their comments. They're stakeholders. They're people who provide our public service for us with regard to law enforcement and the jobs that the police do. Police and fire, for all the talk about, "Let's integrate, and let's all come together, and let's all be under the same roof," fire has a completely different purpose than police. Public Works has a completely different purpose than all of it. You need functional spaces for all of these public services to exist. I am not sold on showers as being the right place. We keep saying, "There's no perfect location, oh, we'll fix whatever problems there might be back here." No, there's no perfect location, but you do have a good location at Third Street. It's a solid building, it is not a failing facility, as has been characterized at the beginning of this meeting. It is perfectly functional for the, for the needs of the police. They tell us this, time after time, when they come to us. And for those of us that have taken the time to go to them, I hear a lot of conversations that haven't even been brought up in this, this, uh, this venue. Let's just take, for instance, social workers. I, I, I won't say who I've been talking to about what they're thinking and what they're feeling, but they are close to the transit station, where when people come off the buses from that transit station, and they are new to Bloomington, and this happens maybe more frequently than you might realize, one of the first things they do is come to the police station, where they can get help, where they can get resources, uh, and so that is something that is happening in the current location, where that location is. People needing assistance, knowing where to go, going to the police station, and then getting the referrals from our wonderful social work team that is now embedded in the BPD, which is a good thing. It's an innovative thing, it's an evolutionary thing. Bloomington is not behind the curve there. When we talk about fear of change, and loss of familiarity, and status quo, and, that's so condescending to the evolution that the police department has, has seen over the years. We are not a community that has not embraced the need for our police department to be respectful of everyone who lives here, including marginalized people. They're well-trained, they're well-disciplined, they get that, they know that. And so this whole idea that somehow co-locating us together in the same roof is gonna make us a more progressive community, we're already a progressive community when it comes to public safety, and to say anything different is condescending to the very people who are doing their best to provide for the public safety of everybody who lives here, irrespective of their station in life. And if you ride with them, and you see what they do, and you see how they interact with people, you know that. Hearing Jeff Richardson talk about his early experiences on this council, and good experiences with the police officers even, you know, decades ago, who care about this community? They're not a bunch of thugs out there wanting to pull their guns out on people. That isn't happening here in Bloomington, because we wouldn't allow it. That's not who Bloomington is. So any talk about somehow this move to showers is a move to make us, put us on the map as some progressive community, I'm not buying that argument. We're already in a good place here. The police want to stay where they are. As a matter of fact, they would like a nice, brand-new, built-for-purpose facility, who wouldn't? But if that's not fiscally feasible, the best thing we can do is allow them to stay where they are, give them the money to renovate and to expand, and to meet the needs that they have now and also into the future. The issue of attrition and where our police department is right now, and then talk about we're a growing city, we're getting bigger, we're gonna need to have room to expand, you tell me how long it's gonna take to make up for the fact that we are down 22 officers? How long is that gonna take for us to build that backup, to get that confidence back up to where police officers want to come and work in Bloomington? Because we're a community that listens to them, pays attention to them when they bring their professionalism in here and say, "We don't think showers is the right investment for your public safety dollars. We don't think that's fair to the public who pay those taxes that we just increased." So I, I think we have been extremely tone-deaf in really listening to the people and to the community and to the police officers themselves in what it is that they need in order to do their jobs and be professional. So again, continuity of operational plans and resiliencies, kudos. During that flood, police and fire kept functioning. Both of their headquarters got obliterated in that flood, as, as many buildings nearby in the downtown area were wiped out with that terrible flood. But neither the police, neither the fire department stopped operating, because they're resilient, they are. They know how to deal with emergencies, that's what they do. And I think the talk about, you know, if everybody's here under the same roof, and we have a tornado, and we have an earthquake, sure, that's a pretty remote possibility. But again, people have brought to my attention the issue of 9/11, and when Rudy Giuliani decided to put everything in the Twin Towers, and we all know what happened on that day, that city was, was in a disaster for more reasons than one. So I think this idea about integration versus isolation, I don't have a problem with police and fire being isolated in areas of our city where they can respond quickly from either central or nearby locations, that's a good thing for public safety. Putting them all together in one roof here, just intuitively, commonsense-wise, forget about co-location, and is that the trend of the day that big cities are talking about? This is the way we look progressive? To put everybody under the same roof? I'm not buying it. Each department, whether it's fire or whether it's police, they have a certain functionality, and they, they need a building in which they can function. This is not the building. So again, I'll be voting for Amendment One. I hope everybody will stop with the, you know, just not listening, not paying attention, and not doing the feasibility study and the due diligence that was required, this was coming up way too fast. Council did not have the opportunity to do our due diligence, and, but when more information comes to light, I am more and more convinced this is not the right use of our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Well, there have been a lot of interesting points made this evening, and I appreciate everybody being so engaged and thoughtful about this process. Um, and I could certainly, um, you know, talk a long time, uh, about some of the things my colleagues have said, but I'll try to keep this short. Bloomington Police Department needs more space, they have needed more space for many years. The mayor has taken expansion of the current BPT, BPD station off the table. He is not gonna do it, uh, with, um, these bond funds. So if we don't purchase showers, uh, with these funds, so if we, in other words, if we approve this amendment, what funding would be available to... this amendment, what funding would be available to provide BPD more space? What funding could either this administration or the next mayor tap to provide that additional space that's needed? The answer, as we heard from our controller Jeff Underwood earlier tonight, is that a general obligation bond would have to be issued, which would entail a new property tax rate and increase in our property taxes. I don't think that is a smart way to go. We have already increased local income taxes, we've already issued bonds last year in the amount of $10 million. That did also raise our property taxes. I think the prudent thing to do is to take this opportunity and this bond funding for which we pass the ED Lit and buy showers and put the police station and the fire administration there. That said, I will not be approving any use of cred funds or creed funds, depending on how you prefer to pronounce that, which I believe is part of the mayor's plan to shore up the funding for renovating showers. I don't think that's an appropriate use of creed funds, so I'll keep that in mind and let's work on a different way to make up that approximately $2 million funding shortfall later this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Sims or Councilmember Volin? Council, I'm sorry. I'd like to pass too.
Madam Chair, I mean, this is a big enough debate, as Councilmember Rallo has pointed out, that I hope that we actually engage in debate and that there be, you know, an opportunity for a second round of rebuttals. So I'm hoping that this is not the last opportunity for people to speak, but I'm very eager to hear from all my colleagues too.
Is there a desire among the council for an additional round of discussion?
Sure.
Sure?
This is a big deal.
Thank you to everyone who has offered comment and who has reached out and contacted us and who has helped us learn more about the various perspectives on this issue. For me, anyway, this is a very hard decision because it's so expensive and because public safety, more, more to the point, public safety is so important and so central to what we Some things I, I, I too separate into things I hear that are compelling and things that I hear are not, that are not compelling. I already know that we're going to base this on imperfect, we are going to make this decision, everybody on this dais is going to make this decision based on imperfect information. We're not going to know everything there is to know to make the very, very, very best decision, so we are all doing the best we can on that. I do find it very compelling to think in terms of a public safety function and a police function that grows and evolves and changes over time. I wholeheartedly agree. I believe our police department has done that. And, and I think that that fact has been recognized by other police departments, it's been recognized by Kalia. So I do think that we already do that. What is not compelling to me is the, is the suggestion that police department has to be right next door in order for this to happen. There's almost an implication there that, that they need to have their feet held to the fire to do the right thing and to behave with values that are consistent with our community's values. And I don't find that to be a compelling argument. I think that our police have advanced and evolved over time with social workers, with, with other different, not, the use of non-sworn officers with a lot of different things without being co-located, without having someone, without being next door to city administration. So that's not a particularly compelling issue to me. The police viewpoint is very compelling to me. We talk a lot about on council and we talk a lot in our work about lived experiences, people who are actually frontline, who actually have to do this work. And I, yes, I do listen to those voices and I do listen and hear the concerns about ways in which showers would not be inadequate. That's part of the reason I pushed so hard tonight. I still have issues with ingress and egress. And that's why I pushed so hard tonight and I said, help me feel better about this. What I've heard so far is, okay, we'll fix it, we get it, we'll fix it. What I didn't hear was how. And I heard some, I got a little closer to that tonight and I heard some suggestions as to how that might be. But I still, I still have some concerns about ingress and egress. Something else I find compelling is what I have heard from scores of residents, literally scores of residents, who have concerns about moving police to showers for any number of reasons. One of those is the price tag on that. Included are the traffic patterns, so close to a school, so close to churches, so close to the Beeline and Farmer's Market. I have to take those seriously. I wish we had been left with two genuine options here. And I find that some, a source of frustration in this process. What I'm hearing is, well, we could buy showers, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity and there's really nothing else we could do. There is something else we could do, we could look at it in addition to our Third Street and we're not, we're being presented with a vote up or down on one issue and I find that very frustrating. I don't feel like we have adequately pursued the option of what a serious expansion, we, I don't believe we've taken a serious look at what an expansion of Third Street would actually do, so. And those are some of the missing pieces of information for me that leave me still thinking. So I look forward to hearing my other colleagues. Thank you. Everybody's sighing very heavily, you notice?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Sims or Councilmember Volin?
I'll go.
Councilmember Volin?
So I was presented with a handout of a putative slideshow from Deputy Mayor Carmichael, which I appreciate, that sort of gives a last argument for purchasing the building behind me. And there are three slides labeled benefits, four points in each slide, and I find myself interested in each point and I kind of wanted to go through them. First point says, it's, this is a once-in-generation opportunity to unite public safety under one roof. Technically Plans B and C are also that because they both proposed to put fire and police together. What I think she meant here was, this is a once-in-generation opportunity to unite public safety under one roof with City Hall. And in that case, it's, I agree that, that that's true. So I'm going to say that's a, you know, an iffy one. Second point was, projected to serve public safety purpose for at least 30 years due to expansion opportunities. I agree, that's true, I think that's true. The third point, the CFC space has been meticulously maintained, is extremely well-engineered and it's flexible and its possible applications for our use. I don't agree with this because it still needs $15 million of renovation. It's still a significant price tag, no matter what choice we make. So, I mean, the, while it's, there's a benefit to it being, having room for expansion, you know, I mean, the, there's still going to be substantial renovation necessary in this building according to the administration. The next point, proceeds from the sale of the existing police building property would be used to offset the purchase price of the new space. But the administration keeps negating that by talking about, I mean, there's a later point where it says, the building has significant deficiencies, including the ongoing threat of flooding. I mean, this, if, if they only think the value of the property is the land, then I find, I find that problematic and maybe a waste of taxpayer money. That's value that could be sold to somebody who would use the building existing. So I feel that's contradictory and I don't agree with that point. The next benefit, it will provide far superior working conditions that should aid in employee retention and expansion. I would ask far superior for whom? The FOP seems to think that it won't be far superior. Maybe it will benefit the administrations, the various departments of the administration, but I don't agree with that point. The next point, provides adequate and appropriate room for each employee to perform their duties to store evidence properly and to provide room for meetings and equipment. I definitely agree with that, it would definitely do that, the showers would. The next point, the shower space is ADA compliant, accessible and includes an elevator. Agreed, that, that is a benefit of purchasing showers. The eighth point, purchasing and remodeling showers allows existing operations to continue without interruption. Well, that would also be true with an addition or new construction, so I don't think this point is valid, I don't agree with it. If you were to expand in Plan B, you'd build a new building, move as many functions as you can into it and then you might have some disruption, so, but you definitely wouldn't with a Plan C, where you'd build on new, on a whole new site. The ninth point, police departments operate successfully in urban environments across the country? Yes, that's true, I agree with that. You know, if our department had to work in a more dense environment because the city itself was denser, we would find a way to make it work. So I agree with that. The next point, an investment in this space makes far more sense than continuing to put money into an undersized, outdated building with significant deficiencies, including the ongoing threat of flooding. I think this is a false choice. I think, I mean, I, I think I showed in the committee hearings that it would cost less to, I mean, it's entirely a matter of how much renovation we think the existing building needs. The FOP believes that it needs very little, even if we accept Ms. Koontz's assumption of a million dollars, $700,000 to a million dollars for fixing the drainage issue around the building. I mean, if we don't feel the need to renovate the existing building, then we are saving ourselves several million dollars and that plan becomes more competitive. So the, the choice we're being offered here is not really a choice, it's a take it or leave it, a Plan A. So I don't agree with the, I disagree that the investment in the space necessarily makes more sense. The 11th point, the building is in a great location and this proposed move is a fantastic use of a historic building. It's in a great location for City Hall, it's in a great location for office space, it has been argued that it's not as good, a greater location for a police department. So while I'm not strongly against this point, I don't really agree with it. And finally, the 12th point, city departments in close proximity to one another better serves residents. I'd say that's true and I would agree with it, but I would also point out that we're going to make a choice, no matter what, with respect to location. Right now, I just did a Google Map search from City Hall to, I picked a place in the southeast corner of the city, which is in the opposite direction from the police department as this building is. I chose the restaurant and bar called C3. Right now, a Google Map distance showed that it's an eight-minute drive from the police headquarters, it's an 11-minute drive from here. A movement of the police station would serve some parts of the city more optimally and some less. We can argue that perhaps moving it north and west might slightly serve the growing west side more than the east side, but I think it's a wash. Somebody is going to benefit and somebody's not going to benefit from the relocation of, I mean, from the, from, with respect to response time. So all in all, I find the benefits to be, like, I agree with half and I disagree with half. It's kind of a wash. And that's been my problem the whole time, is that even now, I, I could go either way on this. There's more I have to say. I think that the, the, the decisive points or the dispositive points, as my colleague Mr. Flaherty likes to say, come down to the issue of the fitness of this building for this purpose, for its location, its durability and its accessibility. I think everyone has a different definition with respect to location of safety. I've said this before, I said it this year, we shouldn't design our churches for Easter Sunday, we shouldn't design our parking lots for Black Friday and we shouldn't widen our roads for the worst emergency. The mayor makes a good point about the ongoing day-to-day benefit of departments being co-located, but that's also an argument for public works staying in showers or utilities moving in here or BT being nearby. All those other employees would theoretically benefit from seeing each other. So this is really about co-location of public safety specifically and not the, some general principle that every department in City Hall, every department in the city should be in City Hall. I don't think anybody really does think that. The current location of the headquarters isn't less safe, in my opinion. If you add an addition, it's going to close off the sidewalk that currently is on the west side of the building, which goes through the parking lot. If we're worried about children in the park, one of the things that the police have said they would like they'll do is fence off the parking lot. This would give, give us a reason to do so if there's more headquarters there. And, you know, I think that that would prevent the stray soccer ball, as nice as it might be to have a soccer field in this area, I'm sure there's some already, but it would be less likely for children to wander there. So I'm not really persuaded on the benefit of the location. As far as durability goes, a masonry building just doesn't compare to the current headquarters whose blockiness is a virtue. That is a category for a building, I question whether this one could be made one. But Chief Moore says they plan for every emergency and I take his word for it. I, you know, still believe that we have lessons to learn from Tuscaloosa and how they dealt with the actual emergency of a, of an F5 hurricane, we should look into it. I thought, as far as accessibility goes, former Councilmember Sabag, who took office the year this building was occupied and, and serving three terms here, pointed out a very interesting thing, that 8th Street was intentionally calmed when City Hall moved to showers. It did used to go through and it was intentionally calmed for the sake of pedestrianism. So, like, that was maybe the first time that that point had been brought up and I thought it was very interesting. I wonder why maybe CFC isn't willing to cut the building apart and sell smaller parts of it? Maybe because they're just trying to, I mean, I, I've heard tonight for the first time also that they are looking to build more workforce housing. I commend them on that, by the way, and indirectly, our purchase of this building would enable more workforce housing in, in the area, although I question whether they would build it in Monroe County. But I don't quite know why we wouldn't be, I mean, if, if they offered us a chunk of the building, say, to just move fire, fire could definitely benefit from being located and I would love to see them in the building, but maybe we don't need to buy all the building, maybe we can build, I mean, if we can punch a hole in, in it to connect the entirety of the building, we can punch one hole to connect one small part of it, we don't have to do it all. And it, according to the architect tonight, there really is only one point where there would be a connection between the buildings. I haven't gotten a guarantee that creed funds won't be requested of us and I'm disappointed by that. It sounds to me like I'm leaning against the showers building, but I also recognize the benefit of having public safety in the building. I don't think that the, the ingress, egress issue is dispositive. I think that we could and would have to solve the problem and it, it might make things a little bit slower. I do not blame a police officer whatsoever for wanting to get to a call as quickly as possible, but, you know, I, I just don't think that's enough reason to say no to showers. So, like I said, I, I mean, I, I don't like the way this was presented, I don't like the way that we were asked to decide already in two weeks back in, what was it, December? I'm glad we took the time to study it. I do believe that my research showed that there were, there was a better Plan B option than what the administration is willing to offer, but I can't make them do it. I do also believe that CFC, you know, they're eager to sell, but I'm, I'm questioning who else would want to acquire this building at this point. I think it's going to be available next year. You know, I think that we could have used a better, a better plan, I'm just, I'm still, I don't know, I'm still an I don't know. I'm eager to hear feedback from my colleagues, thank you, especially Councilmember Sims. Thank you, especially Councilmember Sims.
I want to give Councilmember Sims an up, ah, and the hand goes up. Yes, Councilmember Sims, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I'm so glad that some are eager to hear what I have to say. This is the amendment, and I think my comments are best reserved should this not pass for us to discuss it in the actual app board. But then there's also a chance that, you know, we may not get there. But briefly, there's been a lot, first thing I do want to say is, I appreciate the members and the formation of ad hoc committee that did some work in this area. I think it was very, very helpful. I'll digress just a bit. I think I heard some week or ago or so, some comparison between an ad hoc committee and, for an example, the old standing public safety committee. I, I think there's no comparison there, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. In fact, what I've heard tonight, a lot of, has been either referendums or indictments as opposed to the facility, to the future growth, to the space needs. We're talking about status quo, reform, integrated policing, you know, some recruitment. All these are important, but I'm not so sure it's a part of what we're discussing tonight with this facility versus, or Plan A versus Plan B versus Plan C. And should this not pass, we'll probably be hearing some of the same things again when we get to the actual apple. So I'll be brief. I am very thankful for all the comments I've heard tonight. Wish I was 100%, but I am here nonetheless. So one of the things I think some of my colleagues would like to hear is that I plan to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council members, I think that's everybody for first round. Are there any council members who would like to take a second turn? Councilmember Sandberg.
I would like to address the issue of the flat-out refusal by the administration, by the mayor, that if we do pass Amendment One and pass on the showers building, but want to then focus our attention on Third Street, that he won't be willing to do the addition, which is exactly what we're talking about, to expand, to allow police and fire to be together, integrate the operations in a little better fashion to make sure that they do have the space, not only for the, for the here and now, but also for the future. So that flat-out refusal, and then there's also that additional, I, I took it kind of as a threat, that if we go in that direction, then we'll be, we, as a council, will be forced to raise more taxes next year in order to get the funding to do the addition. Well, we did raise taxes. We raised the economic development local income tax last year for the purpose of delegating, having a certain pot of that money, the buckets that we call them, for public safety, i.e. police and fire. So, living within our means and allowing all of that ED-Lit money to be used for the purposes that we're talking about here tonight, why isn't that sufficient to do what we need to do in order to make Plan B successful? It just seems like there's, again, some, I don't know, holding our feet to the fire and forcing us into decisions that nobody wants to make. Nobody wants to raise more taxes after we've already raised them this year for these very important things that we need, that we talked about earlier, for transit issues and for public safety issues, and for basic essential services that we need to provide in the city, and for all the social justice issues that we want to wrap the community's heads around in trying to solve. So we have raised taxes. We do have the money to do Plan B and to do it adequately, I believe. And so why are we giving another forced choice? That if you don't go my way, I'll make it harder for you to go with Plan B? And that does not sit well with me. I know it doesn't sit well with a lot of members of the public that have given me a lot of feedback in the, in the past weeks since this whole thing has been brought up, but it just, it just feels not, not like we are working for the purpose of public safety and doing the right thing for the police department with the money that we have designated to do it. And I just still believe that the showers purchase is a circuitous way around that that doesn't utilize that ED-Lit money in the way it was designed. And that, the, the threat that, you know, oh, if you don't do what I want, you're going to be forced with another bad decision that the public's not going to like, you're going to have to raise their taxes again. I don't understand why. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, this has been a good debate. I, I'd like first to refer to my colleague, Councilmember Flaherty. His characterization of my statement is the status quo, I think is a mischaracterization. It's not a position of stasis. I support expansion. I, I actually support Plan B. I support the retaining the Third Street facility, renovating that, and then expanding on-site. So it's, it's not a status quo position. It recognizes the need for expansion. In terms of the, I, I'm kind of mystified by the idea that the building that exists there, center block and, and steel that was built in the mid-sixties to be a police station is somehow antiquated, but the 110, 50-year-old building here is somehow, you know, acceptable or will overlook the fact that it's, that it's 110 years old and was never built to be a police station, was built to be a furniture factory, can be made into a nice office space, but that's, it doesn't go any further. So that's, I, I don't find that convincing. Councilmember Rosenbarger invoked testimony by Chief DeKoff and Chief Moore, and I, I must say, as I said last time, I referenced, that department heads, with all due respect to them, they're not in a position to counter the wishes of the mayor. That's just a fact. Case in point, 100% of the officers don't want to move here. But department heads, and in this case, the chief of police, has to parse his words very carefully, and I'll leave it at that. I would say that the, I am, I am very perturbed by the process. Part of the process is this sort of, sort of Damocles of, of the threat that we're, we need to expand, and therefore, if we don't, if we don't take the showers, then expansion's out of the question because the Third Street facility is just too antiquated and we can't expand. It's a waste of money. I think that's nonsense. I think that the administration has foreclosed on our ability to make that choice, and because that threat is, 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 is there, it is a form of coercion. The current mayor will be out of office in 11 months, so responding to Councilmember Piedmont Smith's worry, what would we do with the money? Well, we've got a palette of, of things to use for the money. We have a lot of public safety projects to use in the meantime, and we could begin the renovation of the existing Third Street facility. The remaining funds can be used by the future mayor. And with future revenue coming in, I don't see any reason why we can't, as Councilmember Volin said, reexamine using, building on-site at the Third Street facility, an additional 15,000 square feet. 10,000 square feet for the police, 5,000 for fire administration. So a three-story building adjoining the, the existing facility. What would they get us? The 35,000 square feet, according to the police? They say 130 or 250 officers can fit in that facility. That's for the long term. That, we're not going to run out of room there in any, in any foreseeable future, even with annexation, if annexation came, went through. Reminder, we're at 80 officers right now, so we have, we would have room for at least 50 more. I would just conclude by saying, if you're in a quandary, if you're unsure about this, then err on the side of those who are going to be affected, the preferences of those who are occupying it. They're the ones who are going to be living in it, they're going to be working in it, they're the ones that are going to be serving the community, they have a difficult job to do. I'm sure they'll keep doing it to the best of their ability, but they're asking us not to do this, not to put them there. And so I err on the, the side of respecting them because they have to live with it. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, since Councilmember Rallo referred to my previous comments, and I think they were misunderstood. So what I said was, if we disapprove the showers purchase as part of the use of the bond funds that we already approved in December, we would have to issue a general obligation bond, which is an increase in property taxes, to get funds to give the Bloomington Police Department the space that they need. So, in other words, if, let's say, the next adminis, let's say we, we decide, a majority of council members decides yes on this amendment, we take the showers purchase out of what the bond appropriation is. Okay, so we already heard from the mayor that he's not going to expand the current BPD station, so we would use the money. I know, I'm perfectly aware of what we would use the money for because that was made clear tonight and earlier, you know, for the fire department, for the Station One rebuild, Station Three, possible new or some significant reconstruction, renovation, plus a training center, plus somewhere, the admin offices, unclear where. That's great. I mean, fire needs that money. But, and, and the mayor said that he would renovate the Third Street police station, but he has, he's, he's categorically refused to build an expansion onto it. Now, that may be totally messed up, but that's what he said. So, taking him at his word, where, so when a new mayor comes in, let's say that new mayor wants to do an expansion on the police station, or decides we're going to build a new police station somewhere, where is that money going to come from? We already did the bond based on the ED-Lit funds. We can't do more without, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul with the ED-Lit funding plan, so we would have to issue a general obligation bond, which would mean an increase in property taxes. So I think, given the circumstances, as far from perfect as they are, and a process that I totally agree with my colleagues was not a good process, but given where we find ourselves now, I think the most fiscally prudent thing and the most supportive of the police would be to approve the showers purchase because then at least we have sufficient room for police, and we have the money to renovate, and we can move ahead and not wait another 11 months before the police could start getting the, the additional space that they need. That was my point.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, are we ready for a vote on Amendment One? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment One? To appropriation ordinance 2206.
To be clear, this, the, the import of this amendment to vote yes on it is to remove showers from the ordinance. The vote no is to leave it in.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And that amendment fails for five? And I believe we now move on to Amendment Two.
Yes, Madam President, I would like to introduce Amendment Two to appropriation ordinance, uh...
2206.
2206.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so this, this is a housekeeping amendment. Since we are now in 2023, we need to change the number of this ordinance. So this amendment would change the, the name of the ordinance from appropriation ordinance 2206 to appropriate appropriation ordinance 2301. Furthermore, it would change the signature line from Susan Sandberg to Sue Scambalory to denote our new council president. That is it.
Are there council questions? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the public for any comment on Amendment Two to appropriation ordinance 2206. Mr. Lucas, could you also make the announcement on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are folks who would like to comment on this amendment, please use the raise hand feature to let us know, or send a chat to the meeting host, and we will recognize you.
And are there any comments in chambers on Amendment Two? Seeing none, Mr. Lucas?
No takers on Zoom.
Seeing none, let's come back to council for any final questions, any final comments on Amendment Two? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Two? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
And that passes nine zero. Thank you. Which now brings us back to appropriation ordinance 2206 as amended. And council questions?
Over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
While we're still thinking about this, I'd like the administration to briefly talk about what, what fire projects will also be affordable, assuming the, this ordinance passes and the showers building is acquired, what other fire improvements to the, the fire capitalists will be made.
Thank you for the question, Jason Moore, Fire Chief. So if this does go through as it has been written, the current plan is to remodel Station One, so that would be, all but the soft cost of that would be funded through this. We would also do a significant remodel of Station Three, not a replacement, but a remodel, and it would allow us to do the training logistics facility down at the, the south training site.
With St. Thomas?
Pretty close, yes. North end of that, that site.
What's the fate of Station Four?
Station Four and Five actually have received significant remodels, as has Two with, with this year. In fact, we just began this week with nearly half a million dollar remodel of Station Four. It is still on the replacement list, but with this remodel, it will push us at least a decade, if not more, into the future for continuing to use that facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment on ordinance 22-30 as amended.
Do you, do you mean appropriation ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, if there are members of the public that would like to comment on the ordinance, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that raise hand feature in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send us a chat to let us know you'd like to speak.
Seeing a comment here in chambers, please go ahead. Three minutes?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers Jeff Rogers, Representative FOP, Bloomington PD, just a reminder that if this does pass, not the entire building will go towards public safety, even though it's being funded all by public safety, so I would please remind the council to please take action that forces the administration to put that money from that income generating property back in towards another bond, or towards the Public Safety Fund eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Mr. Lucas, anybody on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. Seeing no further comment here in chambers, nothing on Zoom, Mr. Lucas? Let's come back to council then, for any additional questions on Appropriation Ordinance 2206 as amended. Is that a raised hand, or, yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on that. Do you have a, Deputy Mayor, do you have a response? What will be the, where will that revenue?
It'll go back to support the building.
The operation of the building.
Will go to public safety?
The, yeah, the operate the building, the public safety will be in, so...
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Okay. Additional questions? Any final comments? Councilmember Volin?
I decided to make a very difficult decision, but I have another one to make, and because I had such a problem with the way that the ordinance was presented, while I voted for or against the amendment to remove showers, I'm going to be voting against the appropriation ordinance as a whole. I, I just, I've never liked the way that I've presented as a council member with, take it or leave it. I don't know if it's going to make a difference to other members, I think that an appropriate ordinance can be brought again, but it might not, it might not be in time for the current purchase deal, which expires next week. But, I just, there were better plans, or there were plans that could have been better presented, and not, it's this or nothing. So, I do believe that it would not be the end of the world if the building were not acquired. I do want to say again that my decision was knife set, I could have gone either way on it. But I would just as soon turn down the whole ordinance, because I think it was misbegotten, and it could have been done better. Thank you.
Thank you, additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you, I find myself with a question for my colleague, Mr. Volin, if you care to, care to answer it in, in response comments at some point, which is, I know the creed funds being used for it have been a particular sticking point, those aren't being appropriated here. And Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned the unlikeliness, unlikely hood that she would, you know, support an appropriation of those funds for this purpose at a later date, and I wonder if that thinking affects Councilmember Volin's perception with respect to support for this app board or not, and/or if the administration committing to not use those funds would affect his, his vote on the, on the app board. I'm just curious what the breakdown is of...
I had trouble hearing everything you said, but what was the last sentence you said? Trouble hearing?
I, I was referencing, Councilmember Piedmont Smith's mention that she does not plan to support the appropriation of creed funds to support building renovation. And I wondered if that thinking had entered your thoughts? And additionally, what your perspective was with respect to if the administration committed not to use those funds on the renovation, whether that would affect your thinking on support or against the, the app board? That's all.
That's a good question, a very interesting one. I'll note that the administration was very specific about saying that they would not build a Plan B under any circumstance, even though they studied it. They had an opportunity to withdraw their statement that they would like to use creed funds if they could, but they did not. There's been, we sent it to process a great deal, and for, as with so many other issues that have come before us just this month, I continue to insist that process is important. The administration has said, we want to use creed funds, they haven't promised to not use them. I'm not sure what assurances I have, that they won't be used. I guess maybe I know that as long as I'm on the council, however long that is, I can vote no to the use of creed funds for public safety, but again, the setup all along has been, you know, in the, doing this in the name of public safety with public safety earmarked dollars, we were sold the bond as public safety, and yet, you know, I mean, like I said, my vote was very 50/50, and I could go either way on it, but that doesn't help things any. If I had had an assurance that creed funds would not be used, that might have made a difference to me. I hope that helps. I'm not sure that answers all your questions, though.
It does, thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I have one, so, oh, go ahead.
I have a comment.
This is a question from Mr. Allen, if I could prevail upon you. Mr. Allen, correct me if I'm wrong, if appropriation ordinance 2206 does not pass tonight, that means there is no appropriation of the bond proceeds, correct?
That's correct.
What are the implications of that, that we should be considering?
You know, actually, I would ask that our bond counsel weigh in on that, I think he's probably the best person, Brad Bingham from Barnes and Thornburg.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Not really, could you adjust your audio in some way?
Yeah, hold on just one moment, see if I can... How about now, can you hear me better now?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so, if I understand the question correctly, is what are the implications if this appropriation ordinance as amended is not passed tonight? And, as I alluded, I believe, in our last meeting, in the last meeting that I attended, the bonds were issued on December 22nd, you know, on the basis that you had reasonable expectations to spend the proceeds within a certain timeframe. And I don't want to go into all the minutia of the federal tax regulations, it's quite, quite extensive. I, I will say in a general sense, the longer that there is a delay appropriating the proceeds, none of the dollars can be spent for any of the projects, and what it likely means is that any sort of arbitrage earning, so in other words, investment earnings in excess of the arbitrage yield from the bond, the likelihood that you're going to be able to keep those to fund project costs is going to go down. And the reason for that is you have to spend proceeds within a certain period of time and hit certain benchmarks in order to be able to retain those arbitrage earnings. And so the longer of the, of the delay there is in appropriating the monies for the project, the, the more delay before they can be spent, and the less likely you're going to be able to keep those, any arbitrage earnings. And in this current interest rate environment, those are significant dollars. I believe the last estimate I saw from, from the city's municipal advisor, is it was estimated those would be somewhere on the order of 750,000 to a million dollars, it just depends upon the draw schedule and when they're actually spent. So, so in a macro sense, the, the longer the delay, the less likely that you're going to be able to keep those, those monies.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask him a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I forget his name, I can't see it either. We know that there's multiple projects to be done with this bond, it's not all going into a single building. How much needs to be spent, at what rate, and could the, the, the use of dollars that are for, the, like the fire stations to repair Station One, or to repair Station Three, could they not be spent, and that gives us more time to think about it?
Yes, it could be, it's all essentially in one pot, you know, the, all, all the projects are combined in that sense, and so, and again, I'm just, just quickly kind of running through the rebate exceptions here, you have to spend 10% within six months, 45% within one year, 75% within 18 months, and 100% of the proceeds within two years. And so, so your question is yes, if, if you were to get started today on, let's say, the Fire Station Three rebuild, or Fire Station One remodel, I mean, that would count toward those, those spin-down threshold.
So we did have more time, thank you so much.
Thank you, additional comments?
Can we, can maybe one clarification, though, and Brad can keep me honest here, but in terms of the more time, if the app board is not approved, you can't spend any of the funds on any of the projects, this isn't like a partial approval, so I just want to make that clarification. I also, just a note again, so the, the current purchase agreement with CFC, and I know we've been over this, but the current purchase agreement with CFC also says that we'd secure funding by the end of the month. If we don't, we either have to renegotiate that deal, or the deal goes away itself, so, just to make...
Understood, thank you.
Can I add one more thing, please?
Deputy Mayor?
Mary Catherine Carmichael, Deputy Mayor. I just had a conversation with Mayor Hamilton, and he's willing to commit to using no creed funds on this project.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I wanted to confirm my understanding, the bonding capacity we, we settled on for, so first, as a, for context, these are not PS lit dollars, they're economic development lit dollars, they can be spent on many things, public safety purposes included. In my recollection is that the, the bonding capacity for, for this, these bond proceeds came from the annual amount that the council agreed to spend on public safety purposes when we passed the ED lit rates earlier this year, earlier last year, is that right? We took that amount and said, what, what capacity does that give us? I'm seeing head nods, yes, that's good enough. Thank you for confirming. Throughout this conversation, I mean, we've kind of referred to those as, you know, earmarked public safety dollars, you know, which they very much are. But I think, as all of us knew, when we were passing that economic development lit change, the, the exhibit is not binding, it, it reflected the consensus agreement we achieved at that time among nine council members and the mayor of what this money should go to, you know, for the near future, certainly not in perpetuity. There, there are instances where we might wrap up those funds and commit them, like we did earlier tonight within our local agreement, with respect to Bloomington Transit. But doubtless, some of that will evolve, none of us can bound, bind the, the next mayor, the next council to follow those, those guidelines, I think that, you know, all of us would be well-served to sort of treat them with respect, but they, they are going to evolve, they are going to change. And I, I mentioned that just to say that this idea, what, what we settled on the bond capacity in this instance, based on that number of what we agreed public safety dollar, dollars would be out of that increment, it, it doesn't have to be that that's the exact amount coming from that ED lit in perpetuity, you could actually find, you know, ways to increase that based on shifting around the other priorities that were agreed upon at that time. Obviously, that would have to work through all the appropriate channels to do so, but again, you know, how, how that agreement evolves over time is, is very much an open question. And I, I say that, I guess to ask if, if that confirms, does that reflect the administration's understanding as well, that, or, or am I thinking off-base here? Like, were, were you on the same page at that time, that this is our agreement now, but of course, you know, this, this, unless it's rescinded, this tax increment is going to be collected, you know, for as long as it exists? Like, future administrations, future elected officials would necessarily have conversations about and potentially change what the different portions of that quarter of a percent tax increment were going to, does that, does that make sense?
Hi, Beth K. Corporation Council, so if I understand your question correctly, Councilmember Flaherty, you're saying, look, the, the lit rate is in place, the revenue is going to come in thereafter unless and until the council changes that, the tax council changes that. But the buckets, the various items, including the transit projects that we talked about earlier and so on, those are things that were prioritized by this council, but you might change or shift your minds as the revenue comes in in future. I think, you know, from the administration's standpoint, we want to be very respectful of the choices that council made, we know that was a big collaboration among you all. At the same time, I mean, it's, it's you all who are collaborating over what to prioritize for the spending in future, so I, I don't know that we can call exactly what that stuff is going to be spent on in future, if you choose, it was you all driving the bus on that earlier in terms of how to divvy up the, the funds based on some recommendations, but, you know, you all made some choices, and you might make different choices down the road, if that's what you're asking, so...
Okay, thank you, yeah, it was, in the context of the, the commitment not to, to spend creed dollars on building renovation, I was just exploring, or confirming my understanding of other, other possibilities, and how we got the bonding capacity here, et cetera, so thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Well, while we're in the subject, so, the mayor just, my fiat, just said, we're not going to use creed money. Where is the money coming from for the renovation? Could you tell us?
I don't know.
Right, neither do we. I, I think we're being played here, and I resent it deeply.
Additional comments? Additional questions?
I'm voting against this. This process is flawed, I've been hearing from my colleagues that they feel coerced in this process. I'm in favor of revisiting this with a new app board. And I would appeal to my colleagues to stop the Stockholm syndrome, or whatever we're operating under right now.
Can I offer just a clarifying comment in response to your question, Councilmember Rallo? I think in the...
Ms. Kate, just...
Oh, sorry, Beth Kate, Corporation Council. In the app board materials, you see the layout of how the funds are going to break down for the renovation, and the renovation is part of the revenue that is appropriated through the app board. So if you take a look at that, that's what I think Chief Moore was referring to earlier when, I think, Councilmember Volin asked about, fire projects, that list reflects that funding there, so...
Yeah, well, Counselor Kate, do you, do you, what do you think of the mayor? Okay? I, I'm just astounded that we're making deals on the floor of the city council chambers about projects that cost that have such implications. I just, I'm astounded by this, this is not a collaborative approach. I've never seen anything like this, Frank.
Point of order, I don't think that's a question that's appropriate to ask, Ms. Kate.
No, it's not, I, I apologize, that's a...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Additional, yes?
Deputy Mayor, Mary Catherine Carmichael, I choked under pressure, and I forgot that we did have the bonds come in a million dollars over what we had anticipated, which is to the good, and of course, we do expect proceeds from the sale of the existing property that would be applied to this to offset, we hope, well, yes, to offset those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments, additional questions? Seeing none, are we ready for a vote on, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty?
This is a council comment on the app board?
Yes.
Is that right, thank you.
As amended.
Thank you, I, I am planning to vote in favor of it, for many of the reasons I stated earlier. I, I want to address a few things that I considered addressing in rebuttal in the last period, but I think they're just as relevant now, and have evolved slightly. The first is with respect to Mayor Hamilton's intent not to expand the Third Street Headquarters, you know, if, if showers were not acquired. He doesn't think that's a good investment. The mayor is, is tasked with bringing appropriations under Indiana law, that's our system. The idea that he isn't willing to bring an appropriation for an investment that he could... The idea that he isn't willing to bring an appropriation for an investment that he thinks is an irresponsible use of taxpayer dollars, regardless of what any council member thinks, is not a threat. It is not coercion. It is not playing the council. It is not Stockholm syndrome. And I think all of that language is reflective of a sort of hyperpolarization of this discussion and politicization, frankly, with inflammatory language that significantly mischaracterizes the facts as well as what people are saying. Here's another example. The argument that thinking our public safety system needs improvement is somehow tantamount, tantamount to saying that the police are, and I'm quoting now, "a bunch of thugs wanting to pull their guns on people," is an absurd argument. I have never said anything of the sort. We have different understandings, some of us, about the current public safety system and whether or not there is need for change or improvement. That's okay. We're differently oriented on this policy issue and on a good many others. But I resent some of the language that's being put into people's mouths and characterizing what is a otherwise civil debate. Final point, with respect to who's affected and making sure we're thinking about who's affected, central in my mind throughout all of this is, in fact, the Bloomington residents. Yes, there are a lot of stakeholders, FOP, police chief, you know, the fire department and what the fire chief thinks, civil services at the state. There's a lot of stakeholders, the council, but it's the Bloomington residents actually in their service that, that is foremost in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith?
Certainly is a confusing issue when we're not sure where the money's coming from. And for us to vote on it, $30 million. So it is really challenging.
Do I, do I have a, can I ask a question? So the, the, the funding for the $30 million is going to be, will you say where that's going to come from again? And kind of tell me about that again? Just, just to help me out?
Corporation Council, Beth Kate. So Councilmember Smith, just to make sure I'm tracking, you were asking what the revenue from the bond sales would be going for? Is that right?
And it, right, and it's the app, it's the bond that we're selling that's the app board?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Different than the GO that we were talking about before, because that seemed to start making it confusing.
Sorry, sorry if anything I said before was confusing. Yes, this appropriation ordinance is appropriating the revenue that was achieved through the sale of the bonds that you approved earlier. And the breakdown of that expenditure on the projects is in the memo and in the app board, so it shows you there.
Gotcha, looking right at it. Thank you, Ms. Kate.
Sure.
Was that a hand or no? Are we ready for a vote, then? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 22-06 as amended? Councilmember.
Point of order? Would that not be correctly 23-01?
Yes.
Since we did, since we did amendment two?
Thank you. Yes.
No, no, no problem. Just trying to keep things true. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rollo?
No.
Sims?
Yes.
And Smith? App board 2301 is adopted with a vote of 5-4. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2302 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion to introduce? Yes. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Okay. That passes 9-0. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2302 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Transfer from Chapter 2.1 Department of Law to Chapter 2.23 Community and Family Resources Department. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title II Administration and Personnel of the Bloomington Municipal Code and comes forth at the request of the City Legal Department and of the Community and Family Resources Department. The ordinance moves the Human Rights Ordinance from Chapter 2.1 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Department of Law, to Chapter 2.23 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Community and Family Resources Department, and makes numerous technical changes for the sake of consistency and currentness.
Thank you. We'll take up ordinance 2302 at our next regular session on February 1st. That brings us to our second of two periods of public comment. There's 20, up to 25 minutes set aside for this section. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to offer comment? And Mr. Lucas, could you please extend the invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public that didn't speak during our first opportunity for public comment, please use the raise hand feature to let us know you'd like to speak now. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
I'm not seeing any comments here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing any requests on Zoom?
I don't believe so, no.
Seeing no additional comment, then, let's take up matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Just to note that the council sidewalk committee, I believe, has landed on a date of next Thursday, February the 2nd, for that committee's first and possibly only meeting, if I'm being optimistic, we'll find out. But that meeting will be at 2:30 upstairs in the Hooker Conference Room. And you noted the council's regular session next week on the 1st. So with those two notes, I don't have any other business for you.
Great. Thank you. That should conclude our business for this evening. If there are no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.